Evening and welcome. It is five thirty P M, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and I will call this public hearing the Empress School Board to order. If you are in the audience and you have any trouble hearing, please wave your hand to get our attention. We do have microphones that we can use. We're gonna try to go without them. Um, just to maintain the integrity of the out reporting and the microphones potentially interfering, but if we need them so that you all in the room can hear us, please let me know because we want to make sure you can hear what's happening. So this public hearing is being held pursuant to RSA one ninety-eight colon twenty dash B to discuss the expenditure of funds from the Empress Capital Facilities Repair, Maintenance and Improvement Trust Fund for Phase Three Roof and Interior Renovation Project at Empress Middle School to be able to order materials for summer project occasion. And this hearing is also being held to discuss the purchase of a replacement facilities vehicle that has reached its end of life utilizing the vehicle trust fund. So first, we will discuss uh the roof and interior renovation project as a body. When we conclude our discussion, I'll open it up to uh the floor to the public for comments or questions on this item. Once you've had an opportunity to speak, uh we will then discuss the replacement vehicle uh purchase as a body. Again, I'll open it up to the floor for public comment and question. At that point in time, I will conclude the public hearing and we will enter into our scheduled meeting. During our scheduled meeting, we will take the vote on the expenditure of funds. So is everyone stood on the order of operations? Excellent. Great. Okay. So at this time, um I'll open the floor to the board for questions regarding the roof and interior renovation project. There's a memo included in our agenda with supporting documentation. Uh if you just wanna raise your hand, I can recognize you for your time. If you want to have any questions regarding A. All right. So um Superintendent Berry or Miss Facy, would you guys like to add any color for the public to to what's in the agenda packet?
No, well, you can go with me.
Yeah, sure. Uh, so as um as I stated, this is for to enter up to uh one point eight million dollars for the uh Phase Three of the roof replacement interior renovation project at Empress Middle School. Um, the board has supported a comprehensive roof replacement and interior renovation plan since two thousand twenty-three. Uh H and C one and interior uh products have been needed. Last year, the board uh before the two warrant articles to be able to save for this particular project. So there was four hundred thousand dollars funded from new taxation, six hundred seventy-five from the other sign fund balance to be able to have those funds to be able to uh have the cash on hand to be able to not board materials at this point in time. So that is really the extent of uh of that project and information. Um.
Great.
Gonna do the ceremony, right?
Yeah, we'll do that separately. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. All right. So everybody is clear? Great. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone in person who would like to ask any questions or comments on this particular item. Saying that, we will move to our um attendees online. If you're online and would like to ask a question or um comment on this public hearing item, please raise your virtual hand. Anyone there?
Yeah, this moment.
Okay. All right. Great. Well, then we will move on to the vehicle trust fund. So this is for a replacement vehicle. Um, we have the memo in our agenda. The two thousand eight Ford F two fifty with the plow, which we own, is at end of life, and we are looking to expend up to sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of vehicles from our vehicle trust fund. Any discussion from the board? Okay.
Same.
How long is supposed to last for ownership to buy new vehicles or sell back your house?
Till they along with
We just go until
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's uh
To buy a vehicle that purpose to better to buy a vehicle, a little more.
Yeah, this request was originally planned for uh for later. It was for FY twenty-nine. Um, but unfortunately, it's just not worth it to put our uh money into repairs for it. So uh Roger and I were together. We moved things around to be able to purchase this vehicle now. This will essentially deplete the fund. Uh, so you'll be we'll see a one for a little bit more than what was previously planned uh to be able to start saving for the other replacements that were supposed to come.
That's a good
Anyone here in the audience? Thank God. Anyone online attending briefly? If you'd like to make a comment on this public hearing item, please raise your virtual hand. Good. That concludes the public comment at five thirty-six P M. At this time, at five thirty-six P M today, I will call the meeting of the Empress School Board to order. Will all who are able, please rise for the pledge of I finally believe this to the word of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Well, welcome. Thank you to those attending in person and those joining us uh strictly online tonight. We have the following board members in attendance this evening. Uh Secretary Mr. Brian Gould, Ms. Terry Bean, and Dr. Greg Fritz. I'm Shannon Gascoigne, Empress School Board Chair. From the S A U, we have uh Superintendent Mr. Mike Barry, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Brock Tjokas, Business Administrator Miss Amy Facy, and our wonderful uh uh tech tech technology uh support here, Victor. Uh, thank you for part of it, for part of it. Thank you for being here. Um, at this time, I will ask the board to on the agenda. So in doing so, we have the opportunity to ensure that we've all reviewed the agenda and are aligned on the scope and objectives of our discussion. I will also add that Vice Chair White Knight met with Superintendent Barry and his team on Monday of this week to review the agenda for this meeting. So we have a lot of ground to cover. Um, as always, I politely request we enter our work today in the spirit of collaboration, trust, and respect. Does anyone have any questions on the agenda?
Question of the uh board business number two facilities. I'd like to add a third topic to approach the speaking board for considering the use of their annex space for our Empress School Board. Student, just two minutes and one second to all shelves to draw it.
So you just wanna add that as part of the discussion?
Is that okay?
Then I want to get to the discussion. With us or with them?
I wanna have
He wants to have the discussion as a as a as a board.
Didn't we do this already?
I feel like we did.
Yeah.
I feel like Right.
I just wanna vote for that one.
You wanna try to make
I wanna vote for that. Yeah, I wanna vote. Yeah, I wanna make a motion.
It supports your motion. We can't vote.
I was wrong. Exactly. Yep.
So you wanna do that again?
Yep.
I mean, I think when we get to the discussion
Okay, thanks.
You can do what? Yeah. This being due.
I mean, nothing keeps us from discussing it today. It was on. It was on the list of things we were talking about anyway. Did you see the one?
I did. I did. I wanted to make sure that it was part of it. So there's a document that's I saw that. So I wanted to be precise on that particular motion. So if you was already on there, happy. If you don't sit around there, I just wanna make it explicit that we're gonna have two minutes discussion on that.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think I think there's space for that discussion and Any other clarification? All right. Great. Then I will uh take a motion to affirm the agenda as presented.
Oh, my question.
Move by Mr. Gould. Is there a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Dr. Fritz. All okay. All right. Great. We are aligned. Um. And I have lost my place. All right. So here we go. All right. So um our first order of business then is to vote on the public hearing agenda items. So let's start with the roof and renovation project. Um, would anyone like to make a motion? Uh, the S A U is requesting that we approve up to one point eight million dollars for Phase Three of the roof replacement interior renovation project at the Empress Middle School to be expended in FY twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yeah.
So it's a it carries over?
It like well
Yes.
It potentially will start before the end.
So okay, to be safe. Great. From the Empress Capital Facilities Repair, Maintenance and Improvement Trust Fund. So move by Miss Bean. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gould. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, the second motion, the S A U is requesting that we approve up to sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of a facilities vehicle to be expended in FY twenty-six from the Empress School District Vehicle Expendable Trust Fund. Would anyone like to make that motion? So move by Miss Bean. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gould. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the memos. They were very detailed. They needed to be. Um, at this time, I will open the floor to public comment, one of two. Public comment and participation procedures outlined in policy B E D H. Um, if you're present in the room and would like to address the board, please move to the center of the room. State your first and last name, town of residence, and you will have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Almeida. I'm an Amherst president. Uh, President Amherst, um speaking uh for myself and not as a member of any of the committees among. Tonight, I'm uh speaking tonight regarding the after action report or post mortem submitted by Superintendent Barry concerning the structural failure
So I'm sorry, the audience is having trouble hearing. I'm gonna give you a mic. Do you mind? Thanks. You can leave it on the table when you're done.
So I'm speaking tonight regarding the after action report or post mortem submitted by Superintendent Barry concerning the structural failure and Wilkins multi purpose from while the report includes apologies and promises of these procedures, there's one specific paragraph on page one that frankly addressed gross negligence and management of our facilities. Under the section title background, the report explicitly states, a formal C N A C I P was not developed for Clark Wilkins as a facility project was proposed each of the last four years. Does on the say the pending warrant article, which would have eliminated the facility issues, was the priority. Superintendent Barry, this is an alarming admission. This statement confirms that throughout these work heaters, the administration effectively paused necessary long-term maintenance, planning, and monitoring for existing schools based entirely on the hope that a warrant article would pass. By prioritizing a pending warrant article or the active management of the buildings our children occupy today, he gambled with their safety. Because the administration is so focused on a future building project to stop looking closely at the current one, a prolonged termite infestation went unnoticed until it caused extensive structural uh problems. The report states, uh, these circumstances do not meet your standards of oversight, care, and safety, but this wasn't just a mistake by a vendor or custodian. This was a strategic failure of your leadership. The decision to suspend the development of a formal C N A C I P because of a bond vote might pass is a dereliction of duty. Our students and staff deserve a superintendent and a board that plans for the worst case scenario, not one that ignore structural monitoring because they're banking on best case election result. We understand that you're challenging, changing vendors, restructuring the facilities director role, but we need to know the philosophy of leadership has changed. We need to guarantee the basic stewardship of our assets will never again be held hostage by the political timeline of the warrant article. To close this out, I'll leave you with a final question. This is a joint responsibility between the board and the administration. Why hasn't the board provided oversight for this? And what is the board doing moving forward to make sure this doesn't happen again? I'll also note that the actual after action and the uh post mortem did change between when I uh originally downloaded it and and this board meeting. So I would like to submit both my statement and the this version for um the meeting minutes. Thank you.
You can add it on, please. Thank you. So anyone else in the room from the public who wish to just address the board?
Good evening. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here as community member, a parent, pleased deeply in the responsible decision making for our children's future. I also want to acknowledge the tremendous moment looking for senior community. I appreciate your time. We spent listening together and feedback ensuring that voices are heard, stakeholders are consulted. That matters.
Do you say your name and town?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Um. The residents elected you uh the five of you to the school board, not only to listen, but to lead. You elected me to review the best available data away the needs of the entire district to enact. We need you to make the decision and clearly explain why you made that decision. We all understand that you could never please everyone because each of us bring different experiences, priorities, and perspectives to the decision. But leadership requires moving forward despite the complexity. I wanna highlight a guiding principle for me, which is don't let the perfect be the enemy of battle. For years, trying to make an argument, an Asian building good enough, I applaud many infiltrators, teachers, volunteers, and students who made that dust. We've had have classes being held in trailers that were meant to be temporary. Now we're required a placement to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. There is not one single ADA compliant math in Wilkins opening the streets behind our most fallen. And we continue to pour money into a structure that simply doesn't fit our needs. This is not physically responsible, nor is it a long-term solution. Each year, we wait, the problem doesn't get easier for the cost of you. We don't have, we don't have or need a perfect thing. It doesn't exist. We need a plan that is that delivers a better school, one that meets the students where they are, supports education educators to their work, and reflects a future we offer in Amherst. Let's not let perfect be the enemy of battle. Let's choose a plan that delivers better for our students, our educators, for our community, and for the future we're working together. Thanks.
Anyone else in the room who wishes to address the board at this time? Saying no one else in the room, we'll move to our virtual attendees. If you are online, wishing to address the board, please raise your virtual hand. You'll be moved to um to uh panelists. Thank you. I lost the word. To panelist position, and at which time, please turn on your camera, state your name and town and residence.
Grateful.
We have one. Great. You can move them into the panelist position. Okay.
Hi, good evening. Hi, can you hear me? I'm Kelly Mullin, Amherst, New Hampshire. Um, I just wanted to speak for a couple of minutes tonight. I wanted to thank Brian Gould. I saw him in attendance at the planning board meeting the other night. I apologize if there were others that also attended, but I do appreciate um him being there to listen to the discussion about the Jacobson Farmland Project. It is a development proposed in town that will have significant impact. As you know, from the email I submitted to the entire board and conversations I've had with Superintendent Barry um that will impact both Clark and Wilkins and traffic and safety in that vicinity. Um, in concert with the discussions that you're the board is having about facilities, I think it's very important that someone from this board stay engaged in this discussion. The next meeting is scheduled for December eleventh at seven P M at South Heagan High School. Um, I'm not a someone who has young children in the schools, but I am hearing from many parents. Um, some of them new people that just moved into town um and are finding, you know, both the facilities issues that the school district is talking about, and now this proposed development. And it's quite a shock, you know, to move into a town and find out that school district is facing the significant facilities issues that it is, especially at the lower and middle school level, as well as finding out that your children might not be able to safely recreate or um, you know, get off their bus in in their neighborhood. So I just encourage um Brian and other members of the school board to please stay engaged in that conversation and in in those meetings, and I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins. Is there anyone else attending virtually who wishes to address the board at this time? All right. Saying no one else, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Again, thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Uh, our next item of business is draft two of the budget presentation. I will turn it over to Superintendent Barry and Miss Facy.
Yeah.
And um I believe Dr. Fritz and Terry, we have a presentation behind you. So
But yeah, it's also in assembly.
Oh, and it's in assembly.
Yeah, see, that's easier.
Thank you.
Great. So tonight we are presenting draft two.
Can everyone hear? Miss Facy, okay?
Yes.
Now, Pete's struggling a little bit with the line. Sorry. Thank you. I know. Sorry about that.
Okay. So uh there were some significant changes from draft one to draft two, most notably a reduction of two supplemental staff positions. Uh Superintendent Barry is going to provide some additional context on this change later in the presentation. Uh, the result of this change was a two hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred four dollar decrease. Uh, also, as discussed in the last S A U board meeting, a facilities position is being reallocated from the Amherst budget to the S A U budget. One of the tradespeople that will now be on the silly supervisor to assistant facilities director and daily management, maintenance, operations, so to all that can they're not building this vast equipment. Um, but as as we're all aware, there are significant facilities issues and potential projects in all three of this whole districts. And this position will provide even support. Currently, there are three trade positions that are budgeted in the Empress School District and then cross build to South Heagan and Long Garden. So having a position included in the S A U budget will provide uh equitable service provision and manage the cost sharing provision uh to the school districts in accordance with the S A U enforcement formula. Uh, this reallocation uh will also affect the revenue budget of the Empress School District and the expenditure budgets of South Heagan and Long. So for Amherst, this change will essentially be a wash as the expense budget will decrease, but the revenue will decrease as well. So there's a net cost of the net cost of this position will essentially remain the same. Other changes uh from draft one to draft two include the reduction of eighty point two occupational therapists based on student need as well as a reduction in the cost of laptops as we move from Adobe to Chromebooks. Uh, there's some smaller changes in software that resulted in a net savings and some supply reductions. On the plus side, the S A U enforcement has now calculated and the total net increase uh to Amherst is to Amherst budgets reflected. Uh, there was a small reduction in what was budgeted for the Empress Middle School bond repayment. And finally, just some other small minor wage and benefit adjustments. So with these changes, the FY twenty-seven operating budget is now a one point two percent increase over uh the FY twenty-six adopted budget or four hundred and fifty that's six hundred and sixty-five dollars. So as was presented in draft one, health and dental rates are uh a major budget driver with rates reaching from eleven point six percent to fifteen point nine. We've increased the staffing changes from draft one to two are now included uh as a driver to reduce the budget. So uh the post staff changes are listed here. This shows those changes uh and the cost reduction to the budget. As a reminder, the reduction of five special education fair professionals with Clark Wilkins and four from Amherst Middle School was based on a review of I P's to align resources to protect it to be the total net staffing change is nine hundred fifty-two thousand eighty dollars. So uh this is uh refers to the professional staffing changes that I spoke about um in the beginning of the presentation. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mike to provide some additional context around the reduction of the two professional
Thank you, Miss Facy. Uh, wanted to just take uh some time to remind people here this evening, the board online, people who missed tomorrow, the next day. This is draft two. Uh, we are very much in draft two in in the process that we go through at Amherst, like the other three, two districts in S U D United is long, it's extensive. It gives us an opportunity to really dig into to our budget and what drives our budget. Gives us an opportunity to look at all aspects of of our organizations and our schools. And so it's a very fluid situation. Well, as of November twenty, this is where our heads are at. Nothing is finalized yet. There's no finalized decisions. But in, you know, the conversations that we have, as we look at, you know, our data, we look at our staffing and we look at, you know, that the fact that the matter is in Amherst right now, you could potentially in March have an operating budget on the board and A A contract, an A S S A contract, potential building project, depending on the decisions. There's an M B tuition agreement. There's a lot that are going on. At least we want to be very mindful of what we're asking the taxpayers and the citizens of Amherst to to do in March. And so part of our responsibility is to really look at, you know, all aspects of our organization, and that's what we're doing. And uh and so I think it's important that, you know, we we discuss things and uh we present them. So I just wanted to kind of say that there is something anytime you talk about staff and changes, there's ways to manage it, ways to to and handle it. And we're just gonna be really thoughtful, guided by data, careful with our consideration. And at the end of the day, we, you know, we're talking a little bit about data at the moment. But it is about creating the best possible academic outcomes and educational experience as it were. And that's our goal. So uh I just wanted to take the opportunity to mention that this morning. But it is not minor loss. So there could be a change between now and and even say that as much as I can. Thanks, Miss Facy.
Okay, so um this is, it shows the percent increase of each budget category as uh part of the total budget. So for curriculum, the most significant change from draft one to draft two seen in the curriculum budget with a reduction of those two professional staff. Uh, capital capital and miscellaneous, this category now shows increase with the S A U enforcement being added to the budget. This is partially offset uh by a reduction in the interest payment on the Empress Middle School bond, which is set to expire in three years. Uh, transportation, this increase does not change from draft one and is the next uh biggest cost driver includes the increase of the new uh transportation contract beginning in FY twenty-seven. Uh, see, administration, uh, almost no change from draft one in this category, health and dental accounts for significant uh of the increase in this budget uh as well as some increases in software technology. This budget uh was decreased primarily due to the projected reduced cost for laptops and that savings in uh in software. School nutrition, uh, this now includes the increase in the S A U enforcement for the director of school nutrition. Uh, so this budget is now decreased primarily due to the removal of the tradesperson um and student services. This budget uh that was an additional decrease primarily from the removal of the part-time occupational therapist. So this this chart is essentially the same information uh as included in the previous slide. It shows the dollar percent change by category year or year. Uh, and as expected, the biggest increase is for transportation. Uh, capital is next with the increase of the S A U enforcement and the reallocation of tradesperson. Uh, you can see the course running decrease of the facilities budget from that change and then significant decrease in the student services budget with the reduction of the pairs in the part-time population there. All right. So we'll go on to the default calculation. So for the default calculation, there's a decrease from the voted budget to the default. Um, because when when positions are eliminated from the budget, they are also eliminated from default. So for draft one, these positions were included in the default at the FY twenty-six voted amount. So the elimination has a greater impact on the difference between the FY twenty-six voted and the FY twenty-seven default application. The other big change in the default uh is the addition of the S U enforcement. Uh, there were some other smaller adjustments resulting in a total change between FY twenty-six budget and S between FY twenty-six budget and FY twenty-seven default of maybe negative fifty-one thousand five hundred seven dollars. So the difference between the FY twenty-seven default and the FY twenty-seven budget are those items typically to be at risk of not having funds available should the budget not pass. This is included non-contractual wages and benefits. So even though the district will need to pay for governmental increases for non-staff, these costs are not included in the default. This amount is is much larger than what reported in draft one because again, the cost for the eliminated positions in the FY twenty-six voted are now removed from default. The remainder of these categories include amounts for non-personal personnel-related costs. The projected increase in cost for the transportation contract. Facilities includes an increase in property liability assurance, utilities, repairs, maintenance, security equipment. For admin, the funds are reserved primarily for software and supplies. For curriculum, it's primarily textbooks and instructional materials. Technology is for device replacements. Capital and maintenance is some of the primary costs forward. So the total amount at risk is four hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred forty dollars, more about one four percent of the proposed budget. So I, as we're getting closer to public hearing, I took the opportunity to provide draft some of the warrant articles. So I know there's not going to be a decision by the warrant whether or not there will be a law in warrant article, but I crafted this as a placeholder. Also to note, there was a recent law passed that law and articles must now include the estimated cost and tax impact for five years of the bond. So this is included in this draft. If you remember last year, the board included three years, but now this is an hour save to include five. So this is the operating budget warrant article that will be updated if there are any changes to the budget of default. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. This is the A A collective bargaining agreement. This is also a placeholder as the board and A A are still in negotiations. The number of years of the agreement is not not determined. This is not any I have them there, but I could have five years or one year or two. It's just a placeholder. So this is here should that agreement be reached. So this is the trailer article that allows for a special meeting should the previous article not pass. This is the same placeholder for the ASSA collective bargaining agreement as negotiations are still ongoing. Again, the number of years is not determined. So all the information on this slide is just off the place holder. Right, so this again is the trailer article that allows for that special meeting should the previous article not pass. And this is also a placeholder as negotiations on the tuition agreement with the Long Garden School District is still ongoing. Okay, so the capital facilities expendable trust fund, this is a draft of that warrant article and is based on a long-term facilities project and funding plan. The amount included is six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. They recommended funding to come from the assigned fund balance. So this has been, this is the capital needs analysis funding plan. It has been updated to include the projected cost for the multi-purpose repair here as well as to show current interests so far for this year and conservative projected in the future years. The Amber's Middle School C two group and interior renovation project that was just approved in the public hearing is included in FY twenty-seven. And so this is a draft of the technology expendable trust fund warrant article. The amount included is seventy-five thousand dollars and the source of funding is recommended to be outside fund balance. So as you know, there's an overall SEU by technology plan that has been developed. Technology funds established two years ago to support this plan with the purpose to save for larger infrastructure costs for items such as telecommunication, networks, switches, access points and wide area. So this chart shows the balance of the bond and then totally how the changes and projects over the next few years. The three wireless and access point upgrade project was mostly completed this past summer across all the districts. There were savings for this project with e-brain funding, half of the cost. Phase two was scheduled for next year and there's a plan of placement to the current fault system. This is a draft of the vehicle expendable trust fund warrant article. The amount included is thirty-five thousand dollars. I said it was thirty thousand dollars previously, but increased this to be able to fund future vehicle replacements. And the recommendation for the source of funding is the assigned fund balance. So as as the board discussed during the public hearing, the truck is being replaced this year. This will essentially deplete the vehicle fund. So the recommendation is to begin savings for future replacements with this warrant article of third. And then finally, this is a draft of the warrant article to set private donations to be added to the capital facilities expendable trust fund. These funds will need to be invested and have of course separately and not a main goal with funds appropriated, meaning collected funds collected from tax dollars. This fund is held in custody by the trustees of the trust fund and the board need to expect. This warrant article has not been reviewed by legal counsel yet, but I do plan on having them review this prior to public hearing as opposed to prior to deliberative, which is my usual practice. As this is a warrant that I've not read previously. So as we all know, the work on the elementary school building project is continuing, including including this just as an acknowledgement that the board administration is probably working to determine the most appropriate timeline cost. And so moving forward, I've added portables as something for that will need to be considered. There's a a robust discussion happening around portals at the building grounds level. There's discussion of replacing existing or adding portals to Wilkins. Also for draft three, I'd like to discuss the use of impact fees as a source of revenue to offset the current Amber's Middle School bond payment. There's about a hundred thousand dollars set aside for the Amber's School District, which is about what the bond payment is to satisfy the impact fees. So this revenue could offset and add a cost to the budget for for portables or just be used to relieve tax burden. This one request of the board's would essentially use all the funds currently available from impact fees. Impact fees are collected from developers, so there will be additional funds available over time. I just did a little bit of research. So over the last four years, since impact fees have been collected, the average per year has been about a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. So historically, when there's a funding split between the Amber's School District and the Sohegan Cooperative School District, we've used a sixty-fourty split, that's our practice with impact fees as well. So Amber's on average has been allocated about seventy-three thousand dollars per year. So this discussion is happening at building grounds level, somewhere to come. But I just wanted to provide context on using impact fees as a source of revenue for the budget. So there's a lengthy list of warrant articles. So there's, as Mike went through, possibly now that preschool projects warrant article, understanding there's significant work and a decision to be made around this topic. There will be a budget. There's the possibility for two collective bargaining agreements and associated special meeting. The tuition agreement, capital reserve fund, technology fund, vehicle fund, and the acceptance of private donation gives license and devices. So it'll be on list for the year. So this is the budget for the process and next steps. Ways and Means has been as a full committee twice, had all of their subcommittee needs. I know they're here tonight to address the board. They'll meet again after tonight's draft two presentation. And next for the board will be draft three on separate. Questions? I'm sure you want to invite these please to address the board.
Mr. Marisco, if you would like to come on up. If it's green, it's on. It just slides out.
What's that?
Slide the button.
My name is Peter Resto. I live in Amber's. I'm on the Amber's Ways and Means Committee. So we're just here to provide the report, you know, for what our committee did with this question review. As Amy mentioned, we had representatives at each of the different subcommittee meetings. Everyone, you know, reviewed each of the the different portions of the budget, asked clarifying questions, had the questions answered, you know, then we met as a group and everyone just summarized the results of all meetings. And I have to say, everyone came away very impressed with the amount of work that went in there, the the clarity with which everything was presented. And I think, you know, like I'm a big fan of the use of the zero-based budgeting approach because it made it very easy to understand, you know, what's being spent, you know, it's necessary and, you know, it made the whole process and, you know, from my perspective, very, very clear. So, you know, after reviewing all the different subcommittees and, you know, going over our impressions and observations, the board voted unanimously to support the budget, you know, the draft two budget.
There's a lot of drafts. There's a lot of drafts in this session. Yeah. Great. Well, thank you for the update, Mr. Marisco. We appreciate it. And thank you all for the time that you're dedicating to the Ways and Means process. All right, with that, I'll open up a discussion on draft two. If anyone has any questions, we're seeing it for the first time this evening. So any questions for Superintendent Barry? This is Administrator Facy. Miss May?
All right. I know you've already warned that you don't know exactly, but how did you choose two staff members if we don't know where that might be? Would it be teachers or is it more support staff?
We've got the spares coming up. And, you know, for us, you know, we want to look at, you know, both schools, both staffs the data with the student needs in. So we have a couple different scenarios on where we may, we might not need as as much staff, but it is the fashion of that support staff that we're discussing and stuff. So that's where we're at, that process.
But the class sizes would still be respected.
Class sizes, you did hear they're all CBA, you know. Which I'll I'll line with CPA and we should be really careful in considering, I'll make this jump, will be student center.
Right.
And and it will be about student experience, student outcomes. So always a great team. A lot of times it's a person.
Absolutely. Just just a super preview of your thoughts.
Started emailing somebody once it was smaller, but of course, I'm the page was back in, I liked the page up to the first draft.
Can you all hear Dr. Fritz okay?
Yep.
All right. A complaint I rarely get. Slide eight nine. We had facilities, there was a decrease. And can you just understand why that is?
And yes, like that is primarily from a production of the facility supervisor position.
Moving over to SEU?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I I know you did a good job. I just didn't catch it. Can we go with slide twelve and talk again about the non-contractual wages benefits? What that is in the default calculation?
And which one?
Slide twelve.
Slide twelve, yeah. Yeah, so I know it's confusing because of the change from one to two. So that is all non-contractual wage benefits that would be at risk of not being funded. So anything that is not included in CPA.
I guess I don't understand why is it not included? This is valid, probably difficult to tell here, but
Yeah.
I am wondering why it isn't included in the form. I just wonder why.
Oh, because it hasn't been voted on by.
It wasn't in the last year's budget. Oh, okay. It was a fault from.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, last question, I think, is on the draft warrants that are drafts, but we we talked about the Ways and Means group in this district not having a legal support, no compliance to lose support. So I'm wondering why you're adding the Ways and Means statement on here if there's no legal basis about the bodies that exist yet.
So the town voted to have advise for any budget changes.
That body wasn't legally created, right?
And I don't know what to say.
That's that's a big word. Yeah, I don't I don't know a lot of articles. It'd be nice to have it on that to raise the Ways and Means for this district. This will be having a basis for that group that does provide important services for the district. If this is not here, the thing is we should be doing soon. Thanks a lot, Warren.
There's a lot of confusion about the Ways and Means. It originated with talent and split off to the school districts. But I know I agree there are things that no one's been able to find specific vote on whether that happened when or if that happened. I think the ball at town hall as well to try to find that.
Yeah, we have not had that discussion as a body. So I'm sure we're not like all on the same page of the history of what you're even speaking about right now. So so why don't, why don't?
Why don't we look at future?
Right, exactly.
So it is obvious.
Yeah, that's okay. I think this goes back, I'm I'm guessing this goes back a few years. It's my.
Yeah, it goes back at least.
So prior to almost all of us being at this table. So we have not taught, I said, almost all of us. So we haven't had an opportunity to to even take that up. But I would be interested in the history of that. And if there's something we need to do, certainly we should discuss doing that would be my feeling. All right. Any other questions related to draft two? I have a quick comment. I appreciate you talking about student center in in the personnel and staffing decision. So I'll look forward to if this stays in draft three, just hearing a little bit more in the presentation. I have a question, Ms. Facy, and and you may not be able to answer it, but slide where am I, twenty-two, the capital needs assessment funding plan?
Yep.
This is a slide that I know I've seen every year since I've been on the board. Any idea how long we've been funding the capital needs assessment? And if you and if you don't have that off the top of your head, I can certainly go back and and do my own homework to look at what we've been funding in terms of our capital needs within the Amber's School District over the years.
So the fund was established in March of two thousand three. So there's been various contributions made over time. This CNA was created in twenty nineteen to try to level set the task rate to Amber's and Sohegan School Districts. So there was a system amount of funding developed for both those school districts. About the same, you know. So, but I would. So, but I would certainly get a history of contributions made in two thousand three. The DRA portal, I just fact, uh, fifteen. So that is most easy for me to find.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, not to create extra work. I guess what I'm curious and interested in is I like how the chart here lays out FY, you know, the future.
Yeah.
Right. It would be nice to kind of, and I could obviously go back and see what we'll be funding each year, what were the projects that we would.
So yeah, two thousand nineteen. Easy. For that, probably going to be harder, but.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Ms. Facey? Right. Seeing that, we will move into our administrative reports. Superintendent Barry, I will turn it over to you.
Yes. So.
Principal, we're on special leaders, your other reports. And there's any questions that you can, you know, save for for next meeting, they'll be happy to answer some of those questions, but as usual, pretty informative. Um, pretty well done. And so, yeah, that must be the thing that I want to spend a little bit of time on within this is a Dave presentation, Victor, if you could pull that up, I'll get to that. But if you look in board notes and we'll speak to it a little bit later, as we continue all of our long-term planning, that is involvement with that long-term planning group. And as you know, we got into the the values exercise. And as we prepare to plan out the next phase of long-term planning, it'll be thirty-nine in Amherst, not burning in South Eagan School Districts. So research and analytics and analysis, excuse me, and research and analysis that I want to kind of get into where we're at partner with the um, a research company, Hanover Research, and the scope of the work is um, to synthesize our existing data. Um, and you know, our oncoming survey data, our existing documents, our polls, our priorities, our values, and make sure we are measured at the correct priorities and measure appropriately, and he's getting ourselves set up to get it to real leading, which is part of the sides of analysis, existing stakeholder feedback. And the goals and then aligning with the framework of the year. So I just want to give you a heads up if he does come up and later in the morning, I should be in the meeting. So each board, this one will get this included in there for me. All right. And we'll be at a long-term planning meeting, I believe, this December first or second. Uh, we will talk and, uh, and I'll let that be for that group then. Oh, and so as we get out of Christmas, we'll get into a little more. So, um, you can plug away on this. Um, if I could draw people's attention to the data and each board, as you guys in the last board to get your presentation, and I think Amherst have the thought to to be proud of with with the data. And it's going to be brief. We're not going to get, we're going to do this in, you know, seven, ten minutes, but this is really what why we're here. You know, at the end of the day, we want our students and and to be as high achieving as possible, have a great time at school. Enjoy learning, be engaged, be challenged, be supported. And, you know, for us, we talk about the commitment to wholesome learning. And, you know, make sure kids are seeing, you know, value welcomed, care about them. At the same time, we want them to 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 learn, achieve at at the high level we can. We talk a lot, a shift in our thinking in the last two years, I think Liz Cannon is about this is we want students to love and believe, be reading at earliest age possible. So we heard a lot of times in the past about by third grade. And it's kids reading by third grade. You know, we think we want kids reading in kindergarten, we want kids reading in first grade. That, you know, reading, you know, learning how to read and then reading to learn. And the quicker you get on to reading to learn, that that is better for our students. And so that's the focus of this. And so we want to talk a little bit about some data, you know, my friend. Uh, keep going here. Skip this stuff. I don't know why this is in here. If you go. Hopefully I shared the right one, dude. Okay, keep going. All right, great thread. Or despite, I love this slide. So if you look, everybody, we go right to the left, and I'm a little behind, going right to the left. Like two thousand twenty-one. And, you know, this is the amount of kids are proficient. Remember, our goal was eighty. You know, we want to get to eighty, we want to have continued growth. We want the kids who are in twos into threes. You know, we want kids from ones to twos and, you know, we want to track this as a grade, but we also want to track it onto two-year-old, right? Like I said, Amherst has a lot to be proud of. Teachers are working, covering out the government administration, aligning to the framework, using the same common language, and you can see our data is 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 consistent and kind of creeping closer. I'm not saying that's going to be in every pocket, right? It's the ELA and and in grade three. Next slide, different. This is math in grade three. You know, we're here, we want to move towards the eighty percent. Right? And so we think if, you know, with the onboarding of amplified assistant anchor, the resources, several other bridges, we're going to improve literacy and with the work that we're doing on instructional practices, Liz Cannon and buildings, principals, we feel very comfortable moving forward. This is ELA, kind of trying to get in that thing where we want to try to get to eighty. That is the, that is the goal. And we're moving in that direction. Next, math. We're here in two thousand twenty, and this is what makes us optimistic in two thousand twenty. And in getting into this, we've been running our fourth year of purchase. And so that's where you see, see that word, kind of the fruits be ever, the the more consistent um, attention to instructional practices and knowing our students. Good things are happening here. Grade five. If you train this into middle school, you know, we're here, this is ELA. You know, and it tells a story. You know, one of the things that we talk about with data for us, it tells a story. And this is the effectiveness data. This is our SAS data. This is not meanwhile, this is not our star data, this is not our digital data, this is not, you know, you know, local assessments in school. This is just pure effectiveness. And it's tough because you're judging kids on one day, one test. But internally, we use a lot of other data. But for us, this is a driver. This is what people can easily consume. This is what people look at. This is what people unfairly. When they decided in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, start ranking elementary schools, you have to absolutely use caution. Because education looks very different in different places and in different values of different community. And we even use caution. You know, at the high school level. But what, so right into that, I just want to make sure people are clear. What's what's done on that is pure SAS. Straight up, they take that data and they also compare you to zip codes that you are comfortable with. So schools in your, you know, economic, you know, in your, your, your social, you know, demographics are the same. And so that's how you get that rank. And, you know, move out of this, almost four hundred elementary schools. We're ranked twenty-sixth. I heard someone in the meeting the other day saying, we're closer in Amherst to Claremont. Academic achievement than we are in other places. That is insulting to the teachers, that is insulting to the people who view it that way. We have a good school district, eighty percent proficient, giving an admirable role. Being in the upper sixties and seventies percent is good. We can be better and we know that. But I want to be very clear about this. We do data to inform our decisions. We don't, and we know this has one day, one time. And so I want people to always keep that in mind. We want math. Moving to forty-two in two thousand twenty-one, sixty-nine, like we feel good about things that are happening, trending. Grade six. Fifty-nine, seventy, and so it's trendy. You feel good about the trend and the work that's happening and it's consistent. Right? Six math. Forty-four in two thousand twenty-one, we're trending at seventy-nine percent. We like this. This is good stuff. But it's one day, one test. Right? And and we can, we tell the story. Right? So we keep going, grade seven. Also, as we get into upper middle school, it is as challenging of a pocket in age to get kids to enjoy, continue to be in school if they're in an awkward stage of life. Their priorities are a little bit different. So they're swirly. Right? It's just a different pocket of kids. It's challenging. I'm very grateful for middle school teachers. You, you are a special grade that you teach seventh and eighth grade. There is no doubt about that. And so for us, I'm very proud of this, and I think people should be proud of this. Moving on. We're moving forward, forty-three, seventy-two, trending in the right way. Now, the next is the grade eight. And the reality of this is this tells a story that we have some work to do in grade eight. And, you know, over the summer, I think we spent some time talking a little bit about our analysis as we get into it, we go, we are just you have just, we're trending in the right way, but we're not where we want to be. I think there's some curriculum stuff. I think there's some instructional practices. I think there's trauma over the eighth grade teachers the last few years. It's upward, L A T grade. But it tells a story. And I think we're digging in on this math. You're here and and it's still there, right? And and then you'll see, as we talked about South Eagan, South Eagan's very, very strong, you know, ELA in literacy on the SATs and PSATs and math, we just haven't sorted that out. And then they haven't had, you know, and so you can see as you get into math in the upper levels, it's just hard to achieve. And we got more work to be done there. So next slide. And if you look large at terminal, like if you look here, and we like to say, we'll take third grade from two thousand twenty-three in the whites. You know, trying to move that one, hopefully move, you know, get better, right? You know, you look at you know, where we're moving. It's slower growth. We wish it was more quick. But, you know, we want to try to get to the eighty percent, want to keep that with the colors as they move down. You will get better as they come across. And then we'll keep working with that. Next is math. And you can see the effect of impact of bridges on the early grades, students like where in the year for more in math, seventy-three, seventy-nine. You know, we have a little pocket seventy-eight, sixty-nine, sixty-eight, seventy-nine, six-two, seventy-one, forty-six, fifty-one. Like, so there's lots to be excited about. It does tell a story. There's plenty of work to be done. And at the end of the day, you know, there's so many people who just look at that. They just look at the US News World Report ranking. And our schools do so much more than just, you know, for kids and families. And but I think data is, you know, a very good indicator of what we're doing here. And so I just wanted to take a moment in October because what happens is greater, uh, the data and the test is released officially by the state in October. And you see, this is last spring data. So, um, I just wanted to take a moment to update you current work and I appreciate the time and just taking much use of people's comments. Uh, but it's meant to just be a brief update on whether or not it could be officially released. And this is the data that goes on our achievement dashboard. And anyone can pull this data from a, from other websites, the only websites are actually. So it's the effect of this data now being used. So then.
Miss Bean? Okay. I don't understand. Nice. Anyway, uh, thank you for the presentation. I think that I really appreciate you stressing that we're not teaching to the data the same way that we're using the data to inform where do we, where do we have to do? You know, where, where are we seeing the needle moving? Where do we see that we need to put more focus? And I think that when we've used it in that way, we've seen good results. We've been able to go, oh, maybe we're misaligned in the timing of some of it, or maybe you know, we need to do handoffs better between grades. And so I do think that some of those improved areas, we've done that. And I know that we're continuing to do deep work. So I appreciate, um, your thoughts and your framing of it that, um, we're not saying that any one piece of it is better or worse than the rest, but that we use it as a composite to see where can we improve and where can we better serve our students? So, um, thank you for being unflinching and presenting it and showing the trend, because I think the trend does matter. And in a lot of, most of it, we're we're moving in the right direction and thought is a little backsliding and saying, okay, where do we need to make adjustments? So I appreciate knowing both because you can't just look at the stuff you like. You gotta be fair about all of it. Anyone else?
Yeah, thanks for the granularity here. I don't think we've seen the one through fours before. Uh, that's really nice. And I was just first glance here, a lot of, a lot of good stories in here. We found out some of them. One minute, I was only interesting story, uh, is the eighth grade currently third class in mathematics. I just went back, the last five years you show us, fourth grade, eighth grade, that cohort or and the one, so the law is performing, um, sorers. And it was ten percent of the class in fourth grade, twenty-five percent, fifth grade, twenty-three. In sixth grade, twenty-five, seventh grade, twenty-three percent in eighth grade. This class is getting what you did through the greatest. And I'd like to know, is there anything about that class that this explains that reality? And I always want to know more about how we think about if some of these answers are standards until it's not being a how helpful is it to pass them off the next grade? What's the best thing for us to?
A fair question. And a couple of things to keep in mind of, uh, this data, so that eighth grade data that you saw are fresh right now at seventy-five. So they were eighth graders last year. And so, um, for us, you know, it is a story that, you know, we, we have to do a better job of creating environments where kids want to do well. Let's say math, this one, they want to be well for math. And we have to have system in place and if they're not good. And here's an intricate question that we ask it, again, as a teacher, you get into to my office, you're sitting down with me, you know, Bob, and we're saying, hey, we're going to make the nominations to the Amherst School Board if you're going to join us as a teacher. And the two questions that we ask, you know, and then, you know, we asked a few more, but two main finer binary questions are how do you know students are what? That's what we ask you. How do you know? What are, what are your indicators? What's your evidence? And then second question, when they're not growing, what moves do you make? And and so some of it to to your point, it's not so much about like the kids not matriculating, it's whether, oh, we're doing this staff with better craft, what moves are we making when kids aren't learning? That's the conversation. If you look at the third pillar of the framework, right? We talked about, you know, support and supervision, support supervision of our, our staff, right? The way our conversations of or I'm linked with this, but our conversations around, um, effectiveness as a teacher is what are you doing to get better at your craft? What are you doing when kids aren't learning? What moves are you making? So when our evaluation system, like it used to be a show where you watch what teachers did. Right? If you want in, you watch, say, what grade first is teaching eighth grade math? What are you doing? But now we've changed the narrative the last few years is we're watching what are the kids doing, getting responsible, the moves that you're making. So we watch the kids and look for the evidence. You know, of the impact that you're making. And so that's where our conversations are. And I think we have a multi-tiered system of support sort of, you know, in education, we talk about tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier one is whole class instruction. It's the teacher's the primary responsible person, call it grade four, but you almost get to your class. That's what can you do to make them learn? Yet they're not learning in a tier one environment, they're not achieving. Then we have tier two supports, an example of that, leading interventions or specialists. Right? And then, you know, what can we do to support you there? And then tier three, if you've got more of the tent services wrapped around, um, possibly an IEP word in a certain way with a certain modification and and combination. So we talked about expansion, and I know there's talk about keeping kids back. Uh, it's not really a practice in modern schools, but when we get to severe case, then there is a conversation, especially in earlier grades. But it's a combination of social and academic achievement. They were then a kindergarten, first grade, second grade.
So, right, yeah, I understand. One of the adjacent looks as well, real good looks. If the teachers were the issue here, you would see this trend every year, but you don't. You see the teachers are are strong all the years. It's a very challenging cohort. It looks like just the data, put class of data. So I don't think that as a teacher, improvement issue per se, why that one stands out, it's not for the teachers. But if a quarter of your class is is performing so poorly, the ones math goes so fast from grade to grade, I don't know what I would expect if you told me you're taking a cohort where twenty-five percent of the students are not performing grade level, also I'm sure it's fifty percent not a grade level, twenty-five percent at the lowest score. And you ask, what do I going to expect? It's not an indicator. I would say if you're going to get probably worse the next year. So we're not getting worse, but you can't hundred percent, which is probably correct for teachers, but I'm sure that's fair to the students. We're talking about the importance of that as we, as we graduate. I I would like to see. I, I would like to see these students have a chance to be at grade level, it takes an extra year or however, to be part of something for that. I, I was long presentation, I have a yeah, this is a, this is a problem that I don't think is, it's no easy.
It's not an easy problem to solve, right? And uh, we have lots of conversations, you know, particularly like South Eagan, I said, they have not, and high performing in math in fifteen, seventeen years, it's not a weak call. Look at the data across the state of New Hampshire, where math totally performed far better than speaking than between the national, maybe it's a, it's a systemic educational problem, I think. What you're going to see with our operations, you know, for example, with bridges, uh, put that anchoring resource in, those fourth grade or current ninth grade has never experienced a, a curriculum like that, so that's a first step. And then in search of strategy, you put in that. Um, and then, you know, the, the interventions that you make, you know, as they go along the way. Now, if you look into sixth grade, we, the pilot program last year, we have a sixth grade, you know, math, or even gang, anchoring resource in place. Same with seventh and eighth grade, and the high school is about to release some thoughts and we've been changing some practices that they're looking for there. So we're trying to address it, you know, throughout the S A thirty-nine and N R M, but it's a, it's a, it's a big conversation. And uh, it's a worthy conversation, right? You know, and it's why we're here, right? And uh, we would love to be able to lean in on, you know, math board, right? The superintendent's involved their story with that, but you know, Liz Cannon is quite a bit with that and building principles, but you know, and I'll probably have to put you on a roll with them for them, uh, few that more particularly, my roles consumed with facilities and right to know requests.
All right.
So.
Anyone else on the data presentation?
Um, sure. I would actually, I would kind of want to, I could talk louder. I kind of want to back up what Greg's saying, I actually appreciate you pulling those numbers quickly, I like to see that. Uh, and this is more of just a little off topic, maybe it's more of an observation for me. Um, with three kids in, in school, I feel like I I would like to see more differentiation, whereas, you know, some of those lower level kids are getting a little bit more, um, it is a little bit more instructional time, or, you know, the math uh, tests or, not, shouldn't say tests, but homework, something catered to them. Uh, I feel like it's just a one-stop shop where everybody's kind of sees the same thing. And maybe that's partially why some of those kids just fall behind, because math is something that if you don't have the core, you're gonna, you're just going to continuously stay behind. So uh, just an observation and a comment, but uh, also I think what might benefit is smaller class sizes.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going without the mic because I think that you all can hear me. I'm using my mom voice. If it becomes a problem, I will switch to the mic, so just give me a wave, please. All right, thank you, thank you for that presentation. Um, moving on, we have operational reports next. So as a reminder, no actions required, but this is our opportunity to ask any questions. We have a treasurer's report from September twenty twenty-five and the October twenty twenty-five treasurer's report. Any, we're all good to go there, great, all right. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have four items, the draft minutes from October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, a budget transfer request, unanticipated revenue in the food services fund, and a second read of two policies. So I will pull the two policies to handle separately so that we can, uh, once, uh, for adoption and once to reset. So we'll deal with those separately. So would anyone else like to pull anything from items one to three? We all good? All right, would someone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? So moved by Miss Bean, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gould, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, so we have, um, let's see, let me get the policy letters.
Hold on, can we make one comment on it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, wait, skip discussion.
Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry.
Well, I say thank you.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that, discussion.
We, we do have an item here, the unanticipated revenue to food service, was somebody giving to students if they don't have enough money in their account or any unpaid. Um, and just thank you to the community member who took that solid step towards supporting our, our most vulnerable kids, especially during the time of food insecurity in our state.
Yeah, thank you, Miss Bean, and I apologize uh, to all for missing that, that was a point of order, so thank you so much for catching that. Um, and I'm gonna use the mic, I'm so focused on yelling. We lost the cadence of what I had in there. So, thank you, and yes, thank you. Um, okay, so the two policies that are second, well, we have one policy that's a second read, that is B E D G. Um, so would someone like to make a motion to adopt policy B E D G as presented?
This is the first read of this.
This is second.
This is the second.
Yeah, we had this last one. Yep, this is the one uh, related to meeting minutes, and if you look at your supporting documents there, the passage of House Bill two thirty-one, um, added two new requirements for public minutes.
What are we supposed to have?
So if someone would like to make a motion. Okay, move by Miss Bean to adopt policy B E D G as presented, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gould, discussion. I'll follow the vote, all in favor of adopting policy B E D G as presented. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Um, and then we have policy C A. Uh, so the motion is to rescind policy uh, C A. The, the policies are in all three districts, they vary slightly. Uh, the policy committee agreed that the policy is, is unnecessary. Uh, it is not a, a required policy, it's just one of those that was out there for many years in our district. Um, and it was slightly different in each of the districts. So the recommendation from the policy committee, as we discussed last month, is to rescind. Would someone like to make that? So move by Miss Bean, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gould, discussion. All in favor of rescinding policy C A. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, next, we're in the policy season here.
So let's speak to that, I, I think the policy, there's a couple of policies members on here, uh, a few others. Uh, Chelsea, you know, is a huge player that the amount of work as getting accomplished between the summer and the fall is, is very efficient, very quick, very thorough. And I think the way it's flowing right now is a credit to Chelsea and the policy committee, where that they're doing pretty regularly. And the name comes from that meeting in fifteen minutes, and we're trying to get caught up. Um, it's actually a real strong point of the Amherstville District and the other two districts. When I talk to colleagues about policy and how their process works, uh, I think we are heads and shoulders above most people on how we go about our policy development and updating. And uh, the goal is the fall twenty-five, basically came up, we're still in the spring, and uh, we're almost there. And so we gotta turn our attention to the fall twenty-five, we're making a lot of, I just appreciate the work that's done on policy. And uh, and questions in the process we go through. She, I credit the people for their.
Yeah, thanks for that, it, it's a good group, for sure. Um, so what we're looking at next are uh, policies that were presented at the October thirtieth S A U board meeting. So they would be considered a first read tonight at this meeting. Um, and we'll bring them back in December to vote on adoption. So we have B E D H, and the reason that's being considered as a first read tonight is because if you'll recall, it went back to the policy committee. Um, there was a minor adjustment made to that policy when we removed, recommended removing um, a, a sentence that talked about um, uh, criminal, uh, could be charged criminal or something like that, I can't remember exactly which, but you can see the red line here. Um, policy B G A A and J F A B E. Um, so for tonight, if there's any further discussion on any of these policies that we'd like to take up, um, let me know which one, and we can discuss those tonight, but again, this is a first read. Okay, so we're all good there, then I will move into uh,
Ask question or policy?
Sure.
We sent one back to policy, we're looking, with a back policy, does it, the lawyer approve you every time? How's that? What, just do we incur a cost of legal fees, or are we sending policy back to policy committee?
No, so the way it works is we, you know, through our membership with the New Hampshire School Board Association, we automatically receive all of their recommendations. So those have already gone through their legal, and then the work is through that as a policy committee. And then if there's something that's just like, uh, you know, a really big one that may require, the superintendent may seek legal um, advice from our council, but that's not for every single policy, though. But yeah, it's a great question.
Not even close to every single policy, but there's a couple of big ones, for example, House Bill twelve oh five.
Yeah.
Um, dealing with transgender participation, uh, transgender athletes participation in, in N H I A sports. Besides people advise, but the ones that you're talking about tonight, it's very rare that we can see legal advice on some policy, but we, we get it because it's our affiliation with the nation.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, um, so there's another policy. Um, and this one's to rescind, so we have three policies to rescind, and it's a matter of housekeeping. So um, all of these policies were slated to be rescinded in twenty twenty-one with the adoption of policy B G A A. It was missed in the Amherst District, it was completed in Mount Vernon in South Eagan. So um, as Superintendent Barry mentioned, you know, we continue to work to update and run through the policies with the support of executive assistant. For, uh, we're working to also make certain that any scrutiny errors or critical oversights that have occurred in the past are, are taken care of as well. So that's why we're saving these tonight. So the um, request is to rescind policy B G A, B G C, and B G E as a matter of housekeeping. They, it should have happened in twenty twenty-one because B G A A now covers, will always have those three policies. So, would someone like to make a motion? So move by Miss Bean, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gould, is there any discussion? Nope, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. All right, now we will move into board business, so we have three topics of discussion in this agenda item. Three big topics. Um, first, we'll begin with the board correspondence. So just as a reminder, the purpose of maintaining board correspondence as a standing agenda item is to allow all members of the body an equal and fully transparent opportunity to address items that come to us from the public as a body, should you desire, right? So it's not, not on any one of us, it's, it's for all of us. Um, so we have a list of emails and simply access to all of them in our board correspondence folder. I'm happy to pull any for discussion as you would like.
I think it's like to like talk about it as individual, but there's a there's been a theme of email that we're getting on so-called written note violations, small meeting violations, we had a, um, what is it called, farm email, going through building, uh, building grounds, had about all things like that. So, in fact, I address that topic instead of as a email to say, are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't think, I think that, yeah, we certainly had several emails uh, from a community member related to that.
Okay, so I think, um, I think, I need to understand what our course of action is when there is a public meeting violation. We talked a little bit, we weren't quite sure in building grounds, how to rectify the fact that we had members having discussion related to their tasks that were on, it's more like forum. And it wasn't intentional, it was people that are relatively new, you know, it was voluntary service and um, these happen to happen during the R P process, R P selection process, other things that are in the email change. So I just want to understand what the pathway is to rectify it, sort of go up to it and ensure that's not again, I think, in, in the force of our committee, having that email exchange, I I hope those people, this is not proper, it's not, it did start out with that, the, for that moment, so later on. Uh, but uh, you know, I just, we, I don't know, what are we doing? I don't, I don't know, I have an answer, no suggestion, I just wanted to break it up.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think uh, no, gradually different, that's a board-directed subcommittee, right? That's led by the, like, two of you. And uh, you know, in, in that realm, it's not affiliated, the S A U is guest meetings. That's a board meeting, we're not running those meetings. Um, give people committee addresses so they can have access to several things. Um, and for me, you know, the interpretation I have of, of the process is, you can't make decisions, you know, in between meetings as a board, right? And people have dialogue all the time about how it works. And I think for us, you know, I think we, sure, as we reflect on some of the, the concerns or some of the practices that have happened, it clearly is something that the Amherst School District is very, very close attention to the, the right to know process and the, the running of public meetings compared to, say, in this R O S A U. South Eagan interprets it a little bit differently. You know, Mount Vernon certainly interprets the process a little bit differently. And for me, you know, all I want to do is, well, we're running meetings, be, you know, doing in a legal manner, right? It's also hard to, when you're a committee, it's a group volunteers who have never been in the public sector, that don't understand the rules. And so what we want to do is try and educate people domestically, and I think there's a reflection that we're having here because we, we see the themes that you see, right? Um, but some of these same practices happen in different places, and they're just not as noted in this. They are in other places, like I said, building the grounds committee. It's the only meeting that we record, up to twenty-one subcommittees, we have an S A thirty-nine, and it's the only meeting besides Paul's. And we have a professional meditator trying to alleviate some of that stuff that you're talking about, right? And uh, so we're going to continue to reflect on our practices, and uh, I do have a meeting set out with legal because I've noticed the same thing, and I, I said, hey, after Thanksgiving, I, I would like to have a conversation about this. And I think it's an S A U training, but the other piece is like, we've had some trainings at the S A level, Shannon, you can remember, Terry, that infamous, my first meeting, I'm like, hey, I want to schedule Baron Christina from the School Board Association to do a right to know training. I want to reset everybody, this is three years ago. When the core, people looked at as a meeting, but they didn't need to come to. Whether they want to say it was or not, that's, that's what we can develop, right? And uh, so for me, you know, we're going to continue to train and educate people and do, and do that, like, so, but you're right, all, you know.
Yeah, and, and so that's
That's a question, so I hope you answered there. I appreciate everything you said. My question is, once we have these, I think they're violations, but maybe they're interpretations that are more strict than others. Would we do, that's what I want to know, please, so some of these are older emails, these are uh, kind of patterns, I'd like to just put this to bed. What do we do if we find a violation, especially when it's, in the case of, we have examples of, um, what we did about that question?
Yeah.
You, you try not to do it again.
So
You know what I mean, like, like, so, like, I don't understand what you're asking. So when you make a mistake, acknowledging you made a mistake, and you say, I'm not going to make that mistake again.
Right, I think, so I, I may want to suggest
Because, I'll just say, people make mistakes when, when they're on that, they don't know, and then your particular group, especially well-intended people, right? And, you know, people are looking at the process that they're going through. And I think they underestimate the process in, in the details of serving on a subcommittee like that. So I think a lot of people signed up for subcommittees and don't understand what they're getting into.
Sure.
Okay, so what if we, the value I'm about, that didn't happen around town, it happened on the email, so they're written down. Can we just take all of those emails and publish them as part of the minutes?
We are.
That, that was, that, that was that was going to be my suggestion to you, Greg. So I think that, I think that, um, for what was happening over emails, because it was essentially a meeting, right? When you're, when you're discussing something over an email with a forum of, of anybody, then, you know, can constitute a meeting. So those need to be written to the, the, the record, and I would, um, Terry and Greg, as you two navigate this group, I would suggest that you ask that to vote on including this, right? As a part of that, just to make it super official. Um, and I do think it's tricky with, you know, anytime we have new groups of people cycling in who are volunteering, who are simply trying to get their work done, and it, you know, is very well intended.
Yeah.
Right? And then, and, you know, we've all been there, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, so that's the first question on the right to know. I also want to just remind everyone that through our N H S B A membership, we have available to us as board members training on right to know, there's an upcoming training, um, it's December third, N H S B A is hosting a webinar that I think would benefit, uh, members of, of our board. It's called School Board and School Administrator Committees. And it kind of speaks to how you, how you help your committees, uh, some of the legal issues applying to different types of committees, right? Uh, and some of the best practices for ensuring compliance within your so, uh, anyone would like to, to register for that, it's Wednesday, December third, twelve to one thirty P M, it's a webinar. Typically, you can register for it, even if you can't attend it during that time, they send you the link afterward. So it would be great if, uh, if, I don't know, if you have a bandwidth, you'd like to take that one up and then report back to us anything that you learn at the next meeting.
Well, it is kind of thing that we should try to say and send to people when they do volunteer or are appointed to uh, committees for the first time, I think that's what makes sense, not to wait for a stage and then have someone who's experienced training, I think we should
Right, I'm saying from where we are today, this is available to us, and so perhaps if one of us attends, then we can box up what we've learned to to give to those in the future.
Okay, yeah, I'll believe, oh, that's great.
Uh, great, um, also, I would like to address in our correspondence, um, uh, there was also some concern, and I think it piggybacks on what you just brought up, um, about the RFP process. So I'm of the belief, which was validated by our legal counsel, that the RFP process is followed, uh, that followed our policy with the uh, but I wanted to make sure that I raised that here and gave the other members of this body an opportunity to to speak on that matter, if there's issues.
I think one of the frustrations, speaking of two members of Building Grounds Committee, mentioned frustration in the changes from previous building plans or RFPs for expert help. Um, there was frustration that Building Grounds wasn't involved in, um, interviews, I don't know, I'm not sure how I worked with the J F A D, is your ground, maybe you can help explain briefly, while maybe you follow legally, um, to the law of the law, can you explain if there's any differences? How was this OPM, RFP, and hiring process going compared to other interactions? Did community members have access to the counters, other cases that they don't now, how do you go through that number?
Uh, well, it was different with different with different RFPs, there was only two, so there was an initial, uh, architect and construction management firm that the committee had no involvement with that process at all. Right, and that was the first one, that was the big biggest one, yeah, Valley and Harvey, um, and so it was a big deal to change and make sure you like that, right? And so the committee did have an opportunity to, uh, in a non-public session, uh, see the two, the two plans in that process, um, different superintendents, certainly, right, different different group of people altogether. Um, and I think that was outside of the scope of how things typically been done. You know, we didn't, obviously, none of us sent in on the bus RFP, right, or or any of those other stuff, but yeah, that did happen.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true.
But to to add to that, we ran the RFP process with that. Um, that proposal, just like any RFP process, any that we've run in the last three years. You know, we need to live in different, and, uh, and so I know the Building Grounds have a unique history from, call it seventeen to two thousand twenty-one, um, and I just think, you know, the way we're trying to operate now is, you know, even consistent with all how we operate with the other boards, the other subcommittees. And at the end of the day, I I don't think the Amherst Building and Grounds is any different than South Egan Building and Grounds, Mount Vernon, any other subcommittee than we have. And I think we have to be consistent in that piece, whether it's a higher stakes, is it a more high profile, absolutely, we give the work there. I want processes to be consistent, so that'd be my recommendation.
All right, anyone else, board correspondence, any items to pull? All right. Then we will move on under board business, um, our next topic is facilities updates and discussion. We have two items here, um, in September, we requested, uh, we we kind of referred to as a postmortem regarding the NPR arch. So Superintendent Barry, I appreciate you and your team preparing something for us, and I'll turn it up to you.
We, uh, I was in that slide, I just feel fine. Uh, where, I'm, I'm, I'm
It's a little letter I don't see yet.
We'll see if that
See, oh, I don't, I can share it. In there, boom.
We could just add our next one, let's pull.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add it. Uh, and so there's a document in there, and then, uh, and there's, the document is similar to this, but we just put it in something that we speak to here, you know. And so, you know, what was asked, obviously, let's in August, when 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 Roger Darler, Mr. Preston notified, you know, Amy and myself, we're looking down here to fall to take a look at this, you know, it was, you know, it was quite significant, right? And, you know, I think I'll talk about like the next week, very hyped, that in my playground, you have this that, and then at the end of the day, we'll next class. You know, it it's how we got here, you know, I think, and, you know, is 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 tell, all right? Um, and so, but it was discovered, you know, um, you know, in the summer, it was it was known absolutely um, by people, the extent of it was unknown. I want to be very clear on that. And, uh, you know, we've been in a number of conversations with custodians, the last three leads were lead custodians at Wilkins, uh, we talked, we went with Roger, Roger's unfortunately not able to be here, he's walked off intimately knowledgeable of this topic, and I went there, Amy, I might lean arguing with this a little bit, because some of our conversations. However, you know, I think while the note found termites, we worried about the structure. And as I look back on it, there was a lack of persistent monitoring that led to the deterioration, that's the problem. All right, and, you know, that happens, it's crazy unfortunate. My latest update, you know, I did say it's on the superintendent, although this problem's been in existence prior to two thousand seventeen, because it found its way into the onsite insight report in two thousand seventeen before, you know, myself, Paul, or Amy, Steve Chamberlain, Roger, we're even on staff, right? And as I just, you know, research into this, you know, it happens, that's the problem, lack of order. And it's grossly disruptive what's happened here, and now we're trying to move forward, try to, you know, to figure it out. And, uh, for us, you know, we have a plan, we have a company that we're involved with. We have a bit of a change shift in how we're going to work with that company over the next couple of weeks to solve that. Uh, you saw the, the, uh, the latest update they sent out today at four o'clock. You know, indicating that, you know, how we're going to move forward. Uh, in the last twenty-four hours, I've had lengthy conversations with the manual we're working on here, Sean himself. Tried it with Roger to to figure out how we're going to move forward with this. Um, and so we are, our next step is to move to date with Thanksgiving, and then schedule a meeting in early December to figure out, you know, finalize the pair of this, all right? Um, it is as awkward and uncomfortable a situation than I've dealt with as a superintendent right now. And we've had three years of awkward and uncomfortable conversations, and, you know, I told Amy today, I don't know how many times I have to say sorry. Uh, my fifth apology to the community, and, uh, it's tough, next slide. The background, that onsite insight report, not something that I was, that I ever really leaned into, because what we leaned into was the C N A and C I P from Roger that was developed in two thousand twenty, but really where the the problem lies is in two thousand seventeen, that information was gathered, they spent a ton of time in all buildings gathering that. Previous facility director and superintendent Adam Steele. Adam Steele and the facility director prior to Roger took that onsite insight report and created C N A in two thousand nineteen for Clark and Wilkins and all the, all the schools and all the districts. And when they developed that, they did not put an emphasis on, you know, terminals. So when Roger assumed his current position without a whole lot of, you know, in my opinion, through conversation uh, with him, a lot of transition from, hey, what documents, what reports, he took that two thousand nineteen and created this C N A, and it was not something that was an immediate project included. And that's where we got to, like, how did you not know about this? They knew about it, because recently, custodians and Rogers had a conversation about it. They didn't know the extent of it, you know, until later, and whether you wanted to debate that, and people might say, hey, you know, at the end of the day, mistakes happen, there needs to be accountability, how did we get here? At the end of the day, we're here, mistakes did happen, we are holding ourselves accountable, and we're trying to move forward in the best way we know how, and there's a lot of hard work with people here trying to do that. I don't think it was ever, you know, intentional, but it did happen, so that's the background, next slide. Background continued, you know, I did say this, when I, in conversation, it was decided that a, you know, if you look at the capital, there's a capital improvement plan for Amherst, and there's plans in place to monitor this building, make repairs on this building, look at infrastructure in this building, pull inspections for this building. But if you look at, when I should say that, and I'm honest about it, the C N A for this particular building does not look the same as it does for Amherst Middle School or South Egan. So that's why, it's not like we're not doing this. And however, there were pending word articles that people said, hey, if we do these things, such as the project, you'll repair tons, and you're caught in this middle land, and how much money do you put into a building? Infrastructure-wise and project-wise, while you're trying to to get, and those are decisions that were made prior to myself or Steve Chamberlain being in this board, coming into this current existence. They, you didn't put as much money into this place because they knew they were working towards a longer-term solution. And I'm not saying that was the absolute correct decision to to not keep putting money into it. And big logic-wise and infrastructure, but that was the reality of it in the decisions I were making, and that became the priority, you know. You know, for me, when I came on as superintendent, it was the summer of um, two thousand twenty-three, and the inspection, then the next project for kind of being signed, building the grounds, was moving that project forward, and it got fifty-five percent, and then we stayed with it. I think that's some of the background there, okay? Um, and moving forward, you know, we're reorganizing a little bit, however, you know, we're leading the facilities department, there's different sets of expectations, we've had lengthening along meetings, you know, since Roger reached term on October twenty-first, um, and, you know, we're looking towards specific transition plans for all director of positions, so things that happened in two thousand nineteen to twenty don't be occurring. All right, and so that's part of it too, next slide. Um, and so, you know, here, you know, some conversations about, hey, what role did Van Willeven have in this? What role did B. Theddel have in this? What role did J. P. Pest have in it? And for me, you know, there's, um, lots of things that happened in between, and and, you know, we were in a meeting and and, you know, you know, prior to the building grounds meeting, and Bob and I and Roger talking about a picture of the tape, you know, that was on it. And that was in intentional, like, they were told, J. P. Pest told the lead custodian here to put tape over that spot because they, you know, suspected that there were, you know, bug investigations. And so that's what they did, and it led to when they did that, and they did their search of it, they never found bugs. They knew they were there, they couldn't, you know, find them, and they did some things to, you know, you know, mitigate that. Um, but they, they were not convinced that they had to do more to that. Now, J. P. Pest making recommendations to Roger Preston, the lead custodian. Um, moving forward, we changed pest controls, but in full transparency, we didn't change pest control people because we were on that, and we changed pest control because it grew out of a meeting in Mount Vernon, when people said, you should look locally. And so we met, Roger met with Nada Pest, and liked what they were, had to offer, liked the way they did business, and prior to the landmark coming in the summer of two thousand twenty-five, we switched, but it's not, it's not coming. So, um, but be since then, I've instructed them to go about their different, you know, their inspection of this place differently. Um, and we are further reviewing the monthly, monthly, uh, inspections, next slide. All right, uh, did look into D W. You can see where their inspection included visual inspection of the facility, met, um, with D W. Uh, and had a meeting with their owner, and and we'll talk a little bit about this. They were willing to come here today and talk about their own, and I didn't think it was necessary. Um, included, when their pre-bond services took a, included deeper look as they prepared for hazardous irrigation, I had assigned some potential concern staying still in exile as they came into this building. They stated that their review of the district's plan, so for future expenditures, did not include the NPR structural repairs as part of the work they did. And that's, you know, between, you know, Roger and their, you know, when they were brought on, so the work that they were doing. Uh, since moving forward, all facility reports provided to the construction management firms to support their planned construction, Wilkins property, S A projects. Also, all facility reports will be provided to the superintendent forward, next slide. At this time, you know, uh, you know, we'll talk a lot about Roger, and and, you know, I see leads, you know, um, facilities, there's a lot of things needing new attention, S A thirty-nine in particular, um, you know, this building, and buildings are old, they're a little tired, um, I'm not sure prior to Roger and current staffs in Lisle. You know, and I hear kind of stories of decades of, you know, opinions on how well we've monitored and and, you know, use preventative maintenance to keep up with our buildings, and we've inherited, you know, from Amherst to South Eagan to, uh, uh, Clark Wilkins, some of the old tired buildings that need need attention, right? Or we're doing our best to try to give it to them. Um, and you see some shifts, right? You know, you see the S A, you know, some board chart looking a little bit different, you see kind of some structure being changed. Uh, I think there's some different oversight practices to be put into place, and, uh, it's it's a necessary thing to do given the work in front of us, but also given what happened, you know, over over this, you know, over the years, and it's a the the arch being in the situation that it was, all right, because nothing works in what's happening right now. Next slide. You know, there's some tension, people ask, how did people miss this? And then Bob and I talked recently with, you know, the two previous custodial leads, one is currently a clerk, and there's a new one here. But for whatever reason, the last five years, they've had five different custodial leads at Wilkins. And I know this already, organization, I've been, we have that amount of turnover to understand how your buildings work, what's in your buildings, what's on your team, the learning curve is like this. And years of consistency helped with that, and I do think, you know, whether people want to better or not, it's not a popular opinion with people who are my colleagues and who work with me in in Amherst School District. But that and other transition without the appropriate oversight, without the appropriate transition plans has led to things being missed, and that's just the reality with it. And, uh, there's no one to blame, people make mistakes, things happen, and you just try to get better once you find out that information. Uh, so there's been some reorganization and and some systems conversations. Next slide. Conclusion. Um, I think we were ineffective of monitoring, I think we're ineffective, you know, systems in place. I think there were some transition things from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, and we're looking at that, we're reviewing and revising it. Um, and, you know, for me, you know, I couldn't highlight something like, you can't promise something like this won't happen again. You're going to work really hard to not make it happen again, and there's going to be, you know, I know there's a lot of accountability of superintendent for this, and I'm currently the superintendent of S A thirty-nine in Amherst, and that responsibility is on me, I don't take it lightly. And this job is a lifestyle, and I can do a better job of effectively managing the people in our, in our, in our S A U. Um, but that is how we got here, that is, you know, situation we're in, that's how we're moving forward, in my opinion, and, uh, we're going to continue to to do better on on behalf of kids. And, uh, you know, we care deeply about student experience, student safety, care about our staff. You know, the other day, well, you know, I got a phone call from, you know, Dr. Murphy, that there was a very intrusive smell coming from the epoxy. Well, yesterday, sent Roger down, I stopped my 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 work and my meetings, came down to provide, you know, Came down to provide, you know, assistance in any way I could. And then we responded accordingly. Um, and at the end of the day, it happened, so to move forward. I'll take any questions or comments or thoughts. And I know you guys have been waiting. Hopefully, I've never had to do, I didn't call her post-portal. Overwarpant, you know, I called it with after action or even reflection. Um, but you know, I've never had to put one together. Right? And uh, so we did our best to put this together and to give you our perspective on how we're doing. Based on what I, what I know. The conversation I've had, it was pretty collaborative. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you Superintendent Barry. Thank you for, you know, I know it's not easy to kind of try to go backwards in time and unravel something uh of this magnitude, but I think it's important. I appreciate you, you know, taking accountability for things that, that certainly predate you and your team now. Um, and with that, I will open it up to my fellow board members for comments or questions for Superintendent Barry on this review and the question of the MBR. First situation. Dr. Fritz.
Um, everybody, thanks for doing this, starting the conversations, problem. There is this, um, so a couple clarified questions from the statement here and the brief here. Um. He says something about the warrant articles would have limited facility issue. My understanding is that the warrant issue, the warrant articles that were on the ballot wouldn't have repaired the leaks or the termite damage this road.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, for me, I think not having the CNA has been good for this building. That's what I was getting at.
This building being NPR.
You know, the local development interest, right? You know, as we all know, the, the NPR was the space that it was determined that they would retain. Right? And then even the bill to suit, you know, option. Um, those decisions were made prior to, to, to me and, and for me, I think all I did is ask the questions. You know, like the, these aren't all my thoughts. I, I did the research and asked the questions of people, you know, from Roger to Steve Chamberlain to Amy, to Kathleen Murphy, to the custodians, to try to murder, you know, how we got to this spot.
Okay, but the, the warrant articles would not have addressed this. Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure.
There was some lovely refreshment.
We're interested in, I think we talked about the
We're not aware of the extent of that.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, that was one confusing point. The other, uh, one I forgot best is, uh, okay. There was something on here about uh, lack of monitoring on your first second slide. Yeah, and then we had a discussion in the building grounds of community member brought up that there was a budget expenditure for that twenty-one teen CNA to next year and it was expended. Have you figured out what money was spent on if it wasn't on the the item that was found at twenty-one teen CNA?
And I haven't, I haven't been specifically looking to that. I think I this person, I heard about that expenditure or is that that week?
Okay.
Right? There wasn't something I was digging into prior to that and uh, you know, he's saying I had to, I know some of that to, to figure out what that was. It'd be hard to find, but I'll, I'll guess you rather do.
Um, the uh, the, also people, they did be past, they, they did be past bound the termite damage, suggesting that somebody obtained because they suspected they were farmers are new to the current ice. What we said they're new for once. Why was there not a structural seem of that point? It, it seems odd the ways came together.
Yeah, so for me, I can't tell you exactly why.
Okay.
And it wasn't something that um, more thorough done and, you know, the way I interpret that conversation happened, J. P. Pest was up here and we're general inspection. We custodied at that time, we're talking two years ago, you know, um, or a year ago, rather, this past April, this past April, um, said, hey, I noticed this. I suspect this, didn't pull the mats away at the time they were spread, you know, and uh, and then the, you turn a conversation between that person and that person, J. P. Pest and the custodians say, put, put some tape on. See if any termites like a box stays where, and now they're dead, right? They put up some traps. Nothing came. So I think that drove the decision not to, to do more. Um, and that's what I was told.
Okay, and then the last comment down here was uh, board ownership, I think great public comment today. And I think, you know, your take alive brought up this year, but the board is also possible for this. Um, and I think part of what you're talking about is these transitions from superintendent to superintendent from different role on superintendent. And I, I think maybe the board should consider a policy that requires better job onboarding for superintendents. Like maybe we have to walk through all these older documents, you know, we just got the time, CNA, you make sure that we were rewarded at the time as brief superintendent and then we can sign off on it so we can transfer the top ability. And I also think it challenges this culture that we've been having, uh, challenge or I found of does the board own decisions? And when do we trust administration? I think board members and boards need to be a little bit more involved in owning these situations and that, that means trusting less. That's because we like anyone to class, but it means we, we don't just trust and off, then offload that responsibility. I think we need to have more ownership of super best and what's happening in the near future. But I'm curious, I don't think about the idea of policy for better onboarding policy onboarding superintendent. So maybe it is being improved.
Thank you, Dr. Fritz. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Superintendent Barry on the review and selection? I do have a you, you're ready to speak now?
Um, yeah, I can.
So first I'd like to um, have a point of clarity. When we looked at the extent of things that were coming out of life in this building and we looked at the overall challenges, we were asked as a board, and I will take ownership of that as a member of that board for the past, I'm on your line, um. We weren't the first to take out the problems here, certainly over the last, um, I see people in the audience who've been discussing this for at least twenty years and voting on different suggestions along the way. Um. But we did make a conscious decision to say that some of the systems that were required to be replaced, we wanted to look at it as a systemic problem and say, we don't want to continue to band it. We want to have a long-term solution. And while we focus on that long-term solution, we will focus on essential safety items only. And day-to-day maintenance, but we were trying to avoid any large expenditures that were things that may have to be undone. So like any new furniture, we made sure it could be moved into a different any, anything that was immediate, like this is immediate, we're not going to put this off. We have to deal with it as soon as we remain fully aware of the extent we are dealing with it. So we have painting that we fixed over the summer. I mean, when we had, the playground became an issue. We didn't just say, well, when we have a new building, we'll have a new playground. It's like, yeah. Of course, we need to deal with that. And so I would just like to clarify that it wasn't that we put on blinders or put our hands on boxes that I don't see it, not that, that. We simply made a priority that our capital funds that we were collecting would go towards when we realized that we took A and S and Wilkins, we decouple them as a bond and said, we're going to use the capital funds to deal with Clark and A and S while we have a long-term plan here. So it was a conscious choice. Maybe not the right, depending on who you talk to, but it was a conscious choice that we would deal with immediate safety things always. But that any long-term things, we were looking for a long-term solution. So I would just like to clarify that. It wasn't that we put off anything that was an immediate need. If it wasn't immediate need. I mean, we had fire damage, we had portables that had to be shorted up last year and, and squared so that they were safe and habitable. So we absolutely have dealt with things that we have known about as we've known about them. And the one thing that Roger did bring that was certainly new for me as a board member was a monthly report of everything that was being looked at every month, every quarter with pictures of the work being done. It was very clear of the work that was being done. And that was something that I didn't realize how helpful it was until I started seeing it and said, oh, wow, this is wonderful. I can see that the fire extinguishers are getting trapped. I can see that the AED got charged and people are trained on it. I can see these things that were consistent maintenance items across all the buildings, right? So we made a lot of improvements in that time period and I would like to acknowledge those. This was an area that I also, if I had gone from a twenty-seventeen to a twenty-nineteen, I would have assumed that the twenty-nineteen was more complete and appropriate, and that's what I would have used as well. And so I don't even fault using that. And there were absolutely differences between that twenty-seventeen report to what went into the twenty-nineteen um, plan. And so when you look at those differences, some things that in hindsight probably should have had higher priority, the decision was made by those who worked on the twenty-nineteen report and that's what most of us were facing off, what was the new work report. So I would just like to make those points of clarity. And I would also like to praise the team that has had a lot of challenges and they've had to choose where to put their focus, right? And I think that their focus on repeatable maintenance and getting experts in and reducing and bringing in some in-house experts, we've made a lot of improvements, we truly have. Um, but we are not perfect and, and I absolutely take ownership for this is one that looking for active bug damages goes to um, as fully as we had to look at it was, we realized, I, I, I even understand that where they said, oh, hey, we're kind of saying shaving, so let's go look. And they said, well, let's go see, you've got new bugs, you know? J. P. Comes to my house too and say, have you, have you noticed anything? You know, do you have extra spiders, extra ants, whatever? And so you look at the things that you know are going on. Um, now that we know, we've done with it. So I appreciate seeing how we got here and I appreciate looking at the systemic changes we can make to be more consistent and to make sure things don't fall through cracks. And that we do have our handoffs. So I appreciate that for every item that you've identified and said this was where we think it went wrong and here's where we've adapted so that we, we can avoid this in the future. Because if you don't learn from your mistakes, then you you know, at least hopefully you make new mistakes, right? Don't make the same mistakes. So being able to learn from that and improve our processes, I appreciate having those recommendations and those clarifications of how we are improving our process going forward. And I think that's what we can do is that moving forward, we, we've learned from this and that we, we go forward better. So I thank you for um, the, the clear outline as best you can of how we got here and then the recommendations for how we can avoid it moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Uh, yeah, I have here on my, my notes clarification. So I think you did a nice job of clarifying that, that there was a, there was a CNA in place that was actively being worked through during the time that law requests were being put forward. So what I saw the boards doing prior to joining and then serving, right, is, you know, we're not going to spend millions of dollars on something that we're going to potentially be tearing down should this project pass. However, work was still happening here. So I would, which we haven't seen, you know, those facilities reports in our packets in a while. So to that, I, I hope that some things are more and more whole for you. I think that's really helpful to the boards and to the public to see that because our facilities are hired, right? To, to, to use your turn of phrase. And I think it's important to see how we're um, working and taking care of them and trying to take care of them as we continue searching for that long-term solution that our community will be able to get behind. Um, my question though, I guess would be, uh, so there's this, this twenty-seventeen, twenty-nineteen, what was informing, you know, the work that was being done. It begs the question, uh, what is there, are, are there other items in the twenty-seventeen report that weren't picked up in that twenty nineteen? And so that, that's the next piece of this. I'm still going to call it a post-mortem because that's just what I've always called up, you know, in my previous work, but um, then, then I
Yeah, that's a Ross about mentioned, but that's, that's part of our work, okay? You know what? There's two things we're trying to reconcile that we talked about. One is the Wilkins inspection that took place this past fall. You know, there were punches that we essentially got, right? So there's that document. Then the twenty-seventeen document that, you know, plan of twenty twenty that they're currently kind of using around S. thirty-nine and Robert develop that might not have been part of that development is to review that document with the inspection, you know, to see where, what we can do with all the things that right? So I, I definitely stepped on, uh, we, we have a plan. You know, and uh, as far as the facility reports. Yeah, I think you're, you're absolutely right. You know, there's, there was, there's been a lot of work the last five years around. You know, preventive maintenance, daily and monthly work in the buildings. Um, and uh, since Roger was out on leave and now coming back, it's just not something that, you know, he has produced. And now we'll get back to that, let's stabilize the the back to something like first just over a month. And uh, we should, so he's getting into it, catching up on things and, um, and you know, like today, you know, the water stop where we're getting our burn for that guy, it was a country. Few hours. So, you know, it's just all something in, you know, some way or
Yeah, and I guess my other um, takeaway, two, two things. One, um, I don't disagree with you, Dr. Fritz. I think there should, you know, some standardization, right? With, with some things because there inevitably there's transition that's on our right? So I, I think there's certainly, um, our areas there, the, the reasonable gap. Uh, for level, you know, of, of the ward's bowl and that, um, that's a daughter, bigger conversation, right? Maybe for a different time and maybe even for SAE body, especially if you're talking about or, or long stay, like I don't want to retreat, but I'm a big fan of standard, of standardization and consistency in processes, right? Which I think we're chipping, we're trying to chip away at, I think that's a recognized gap in, you know, many areas right now. Um, and, and I see that. Um, you know, big address. So I appreciate that, but I would agree with that. My, my question is, and I certainly see how, and I don't know that it's a question that you necessarily answer, but I, you know, it's just something to put out there. Um, the five different leads over five years. Is, is there, is there something driving that turnover? That we can be doing differently? And, and what I mean by that, is it a budgetary concern? Are we not hiring people? Are we not paying people well enough to stay in the world? Or is it the nature of the, the industry and the job or, or something like that? Is that its answer?
I don't want to answer. And that, but I think it's a combination of this. Right? It's, it's the roles, the job, it's, it's, it's the, the ask, it's there's things that will be in different way, you know, and it's for, uh, this has opened my eyes, you know, as people know. Amy Walker, I assume the responsibilities of director of facilities for, for a few weeks, right? More than a few weeks. And uh, we got a window in, that looks like. And so you saw a dramatic change in kind of workflow. You know, moving forward for the FY twenty-seven year, works of order. You know, how many staff that wins during the day, you know, and typically um, if you pay attention to schools during the day, that's what we do to at least a lot of staff in the custo, custodial world. Um, because you have kids and, and, and staff here. And then at night, that's when all the heavy cleaning and lifting gets done. So there's more staff at night during the day, but then you know, is there a way to look at that? So we're, we're looking to that explore that as well. So, um, it's a bear question, right? And then uh, um, and what does he want to do to plug the way out? I think everything's being explored right now. A lot of hard conversations, a lot of reflecting, a bit of soul searching. You know, just want us to keep plugging one.
Anyone else on the review and the question? Great. Well, again, uh, thank you for that. Uh, we'll certainly keep the situation here in the MBR on our agenda so that we keep getting updates as to the progress and the
Yeah, no, just in, you know, in the recent events yesterday, no, I, I, you know, I clarified, you guys know all in depth. You know, on Friday the fourteenth, I received Kathleen Walker, she received an email from, you know, Roger saying, you know, there's prep work being done. You know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday before the abatement. And then there's a pox that we've done or being on, uh, uh, on Wednesday. I read that email, go. I read that email, go, all right, possible to get it done. I love that. I mean, I should ask a clarified question, right? And uh, and so when I say I shouldn't ask that question in the morning, that is okay, right? And then, you know, it happens, and uh, and I wish it didn't happen. And uh, I think people are in such, working in such a mode, they want this next. So they, you know, if we knew what it was, I told, you know, talked about internally, we could have shut down the NPR for a couple days. Uh, we could have had the people come at night and do that work. We could have had this work be scheduled over for a break. Right? But I think the desire was to try to get this done, you know, so when kids come back from Christmas break, it's done, right? When you go on, and uh, I think uh, that's on the roll into this. And, you know, so for me, the last twelve, four hours, just look into like how that happens. And um, I don't think it's lacking in technique. It's just, you know, it's the lack of thought, uh, knowledge, how do I handle it? On my all parameters, HR, they got him, says the superintendent. Um, and uh, it'll be, so if we act as people who are involved, some of those roles that's been learning for the past few weeks, you know, and not with the facility department, absolutely not, you know, and viewing the presentation, there's a lot of things that happened. You know, they move too fast, and uh, I told Kathy Murphy, you know, everyone was talking about data, and they were reports of achievement. That poor woman spent ninety percent of her time on facility conversations. The high computer should be the structural leader, so Kathy could deploy her time to manage this facility. That would be after. And we're going on a decade or more trying to find a solution. So we segue to the next thing, that we gotta find a solution. And uh, and we're gonna limit the number of facility and the danger to the locals to be kept up by building administrators. And uh, so we're gonna, you know, segue into that topic, and uh, I put some things in there. I put a lot of materials in there. And uh, and uh, is we have, you know, December eighteenth, figure out what you guys want to do. My job, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna echo this again and again and again. Our job is, S A U and the superintendent is to put ideas, potential solutions in front of this board, this board we put in front of building grounds, and they will be in front of the community. Figure out how we want to move this forward towards a solution. Um, I know we have lots of opinions, and we have lots of ideas. And there's lots of stakeholder groups and contingency, who, you know, have thoughts on this. As the superintendent, I'm trying to manage all that to make sure you guys get a synthesized package of information so you can continue to have a conversation, and then charge me to go get more information. If you don't have what we do, that's my role with this. The board's role is to make decisions on how they want to move forward. And uh, so with that said, um, there's a slide deck, right, and we'll put this one in. The fourth slide next, and that's, that's a lot for reading. And uh, and so I I'd like to kind of run through that. I think it was the first slide. My friend. Not that one, that's my Ted Sizer, it was a Jase. So basically, what we have here, here on this timeline, I I put this up at the November twelfth meeting. And I revisited the building and grounds on the fourteenth, and we're on the twentieth right now. And uh, in the last twenty-four hours, you know, um, we got some information from from Benwell and Trident. They were working at a feverish pace to provide information, you know, to this board. And we're having a lot of meetings in between, myself, Trident, and Benwell, to kind of like make sure we're organized. And I know Shannon and Terry, you guys have been part of this process before, they did produce some documents pretty quick, some plans pretty quick, and I'm grateful for them, so. You have them to discuss, but after the listening session, you know, based on what we heard, based on the desire, as we kind of were touring around limits, that there's other things being that can be explored, I think are being explored. I think there's people in the community who have meetings in between meetings that have ideas of what they want to do, and they're sharing with people, whether they're on building grounds or on boards individually, but we're just trying to gather the information here to put it in down so we can potentially get to a solution. Um, and so the question for the team would be, you know, do you want to put something on the warrant for March twenty-six? Or do you want to put something on the warrant, plans to for March twenty-seven? And that would be the ultimate question. And uh, I think my role is to help you get the information you need to make that decision. And so tonight's just part of that process. Here are the next slide. Still think these are the four sets of questions you need to answer. Looks informed enough, you have enough financial information to make a vote, to to make a decision. Um, you call it the actual transparency of project costs, uh, you'll find today that uh, Trident was going to hire, not hire, but uh, work with three different construction management companies to price out, cost out, whatever options we 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 want them to, and right now we have two on the table. And they are, they have one, you know, um, you know, I think there could be other options that would be costed out, if you get there over the course of the month, I'm assuming. Um, you know, transparency is is a word. Um, that we're, you know, I think, you know, our, I'm gonna give you an example, our budget process is as transparent as anything I've ever been part of in my life. Anyone who has questions, there's multiple sub meetings, there's budget committees, there's this. I think our work for building grounds is transparent, I think the work that we do in fourth session to put information out is transparent. And I think, you know, if that work can be easily weaponized, when people aren't seeing the work done, that they want to see done, or the process build the way they want the process to go. And so the board is gonna have to define how much transparency is transparent enough. If I'm unsure, you're already to be transparent enough for every group of people. That's gonna be, we have to grab it, but if we're calling people, people think it's taking too long, it's too rushed, you don't have enough information, you have this more of this, you are going to be in a very challenging situation where I'm being decided. And I don't envy you, and that's all. It's a tough spot to be in. I appreciate your willingness, but you're gonna have to battle with that. Um, will we have enough community engagement over the course of the month? We're gonna, we're gonna move quick after Thanksgiving. There's a goal to be. Uh, a lot of work done, to make sure people have opportunities to weigh in, and provides, you know, and parking building grounds and there's work to do that. And then uh, and then he decides if he wants to go or no go for March. That's what we're working towards the eighteen. Um, so you have the timeline in front of you, go from there. Um, I think what I want, want to do, could make it, so that has to change, because there's a document in there, it's called additional information for the conversation. You could bring that up so we can show that to the board and to the audience.
Uh, it's in simply in the agenda, do you have?
Oh, you you don't have that. Are you in somebody? Yes, you are, sir. No. That's that's bad, I mean, how about if I shared, remind Donald to watch, I share it with you too, last week, we get it.
Uh, let's see, yes, yeah, it's good.
All right, I'll share it with you right now. And with you. So you, did you get it?
Yes.
Yeah, you should bring that up. This is a medal to Shannon and the Amherst Award from me, that's on the screen. Uh, to me, I think there's a lot of literature being raised. Um, we just kind of put this, this is the document we put into place for you guys to have and and make public. Um, I spoke to it last time a little bit, you know, first question is how does fifth grade staying in areas affect the middle school building? And uh, you heard that, you know, we think they have the the space, they have the upper, it's in the lower middle, the upper middle, you know, model right now. You can see that they're pleased with the curriculum and the angular resources that we have. You have the space, because, you know, if you built this way for fifth grade, you have where fifth grade was. And so first, we're trying to be efficient on that. Um, and so I think, um, I think you, you have all the information you need to to justify keeping fifth grade at Amherst School, few socials. Um, so, you know, Kristen Goddard, you did this, Bob, myself, Amy, Steve, Roger, uh, we talked a little bit about it. You know, some people talk about Clark. Um, you know, depending on what you want to do with Clark, if I want to keep Clark. Right? You know, there's some things that we can do over the course of the next five, seven years to to upgrade that, to make it a little more uh, self-serving, and make sure it adds up the space to do it. But if you don't want to, and you want to do something different with it, make plans for that. I, people were asking like, you know, how, what do you do with Clark? Right? So we put some dots in there. Um, you know, these are, you know, uh, things that we think need to be done. I mean, one of the things, you know, right now is it's a challenge and logistic thing, like lunch is made here, transported over there. Not many schools are navigating something like that, right? So that was a long-term thing, a recommendation to figure out and get a picture there, right? So there's some things there, I think you can pay as you go. Kind of like we're doing with middle school, if you chose to, like, these are just things that have come up, I thought you needed to, uh, you know, be a part of. Um, and then the seventh and eighth grade, you know, we commissioned a capacity study, um, the gap, the capacity study, uh, you know, was late, coming from the firm that we were, I received it yesterday afternoon. Had had the opportunity to to dig into that, and we'll be working with Stephanie Grunt on, you know, timelines, and I want to be push that out to uh, the board, looking at grounds, and the finance committee. Um, and so that conversation is happening. Um, but as you look at this, um, here, based on there is a base at South Eagan. No one ever said there wasn't space in South Eagan. Well, we've always said, since I was president, this was a question that was asked to me my second year as principal of South Eagan. And a number of studies have been done, and not once did we say that we don't have space. Well, we said that we don't have enough space for seventh and eighth grade. Based on the programming that occurs at the seventh and eighth grade level at AMS, the program that currently occurs at South Eagan High School, you would drastically have to change the programming to have a chance of creating a seventh and eighth grade. And again, um, so for us, you know, we just wanted to be real honest about that, and Greg, I think, you know, just when you say we wanted to put it on the agenda, I think it's an absolute time to kind of talk to them about that, to get into the rest of it, you know, so. Um, so, you want to?
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, actually, it's sorry, it's just, uh, yeah, so what we had, we had a special here about the idea of inviting to be in to uh, examine their space for our students. Those are getting on a long discussion, and that about, then we had this meeting with the best seats to want that. And I asked a question to the speaking board, they clarified, yes, there is an outstanding motion, a big uh, uh, motion that that is actually they taken to agree, they will not look at using an X or any of the facility space for Amherst School District students and blast mother board or tell another board approaches them. That's still a fast. You may see empty space, but it's not saying a saying, is this space appropriate for eighth grade, is appropriate for them? And that's a question that a lot of people are having. I think we're doing a lot of this very fast now, but you should do things. We shouldn't say that persistent complaints not worth it. So I would make a motion, I make a motion that we hereby be criteria of this vegan motion that we are pushing that to consider their facility space for the Amherst School District students.
Oh, yeah, I want to ask clarify my question of the super superintendent before, yeah. So the program capacity study that's currently happening, well, is it true that this study would show how many spaces, like, we know how many sections of classes we would need to run seventh and eighth grade? Would this study show us how many open spaces exist? I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, you're asking the right question. It will give you that information.
Right? Wouldn't show you an appropriate that, but it's would be for Amherst School District students.
I don't think it will give you that, it will tell you what program currently exists at South Eagan, what is being taught, you know, how many classes are needed, right, for the current programming? And so within that, can you be able to pull out of it, you know, how much space is available? You know, in that building, given the current program.
We don't need for this, but just so you won't be, it's true that the C E N study could not violate their in police motion to not consider their resources for Amherst School District students, right? Their, their, I mean, the the motion that they made was to not look at their facilities used for our students to approach another board.
Correct.
They did not do that, they did not violate their own motion in this study. So if we made a motion today, pass a motion to approach them, that will open up something that's not probably open, correct? In terms of what we made.
That's my own experience. You guys made a motion to do what you're asking.
Okay.
That's all.
Right, so there's a motion, Dr. Prince has made a motion. I'm going to second your motion, Dr. Prince, so that we can have a discussion. Because we're getting a little, and that's my fault, because I'm trying to ask clarify my question, but it's gonna take us off, off of the motion that you, so there's motion. So I'm not gonna restate it, because I can't.
Yeah.
Uh, so I second it, so that we can open it up to discussion. Does anyone other, I asked him to start, but does anyone else have a question?
So this definitely came up in the facilities communications room, and when I said, hey, if we decide we want to, you know, do we get on your agenda, how would you like to go about? And the response from some current standing board members was, I thought we already decided this, why are we even talking about this again? And I said, well, yes and no, because you now have new information, and so having the discussion with that information in hand of your own programmatic needs and your own programmatic capacity, we have not been able to have a full discussion with that information available. And so I would say it makes sense to me that, and I've been watching for when it puts up on their agenda, so that I could attend the meeting where they talk about it, and hear their general, where is the program's going? I think that the one thing that has been clear throughout is that their priority is to the students that they serve and those ages, and even though we look at all of S A U and all of the students and how they work, their their first obligation is to their own students and their own programming, and they have to make sure they can meet that appropriately first. And so they needed that information to be able to have a discussion. Um, I am not against having the, just so that with the current board and our current board as well. It hasn't discussed in the past, it's been a while, so I'm fine with having a more current conversation. But that being said, I I still feel like what we need to discuss, and what we need to do here, even if two grades, I have four grades in this building now, we're discussing one through four, even if two could somehow go someplace and open up space at AMS, that still leaves me two grades that need to be accommodated, and I still have a building that, and land that I own that needs to be done, right? And so I would like to, for tonight, move our discussion back to what can be done with this building. But I'm, I am certainly not against, now that they will have that information in hand, have revisiting that topic with them with their current, just to see if indeed it would, if it be an option to go in that direction, whether they have any interest, or whether they have the capacity with their current board and with the current. I know, was that really confusing?
I'm not opposed to what you're presenting, but I guess I'm just confused of what it would accomplish. Because if we have the study now that says how much they need, we should be able to figure out what we could put in there. So why do we need to have a discussion with this? See, I guess that's my, that's my question.
Yeah.
That's a lot of fun. Answer it.
Uh, thanks.
Look, he asked about the motion, so I have to start, I'll be trying to be effective, it is. Yeah, so I think that's uh, that's one example. So having space, like, this is a lot of space, this is, you have to jam in six classes in here. Not all appropriate, right? So just having space is not the answer for Not all appropriate, right? So just having space is not the answer for, um. Where I have classrooms, so my classrooms require certain special capital costs, you know, Carlos in place, right? Lab benches, whatever, just having space is enough, so. This, I want there to be an answer to this pressing question, and I think it's, I think people are. Looking for data-driven decisions, so having the data showing that, able that it's not appropriate, I think it'd be. Very welcome by a lot of people, I just so exhausted of. Not having that data to support positions.
So I. I also am exhausted by this question, I agree with you on, on that, um. So I wonder if. You would, I have, I have, I would like to make it a minute to your motion.
Good.
Uh, are you our representative on FOG, is that you, or?
It's F C S now.
Yes, so I wonder if the motion could be something like, um, exploring the available. What's the. Yeah, I don't, I didn't have anything pre-written, so I was expecting this to, I, I wanna work through the fog. I wanna empower our representative on the fog committee to have that conversation with the San Egan.
That'd make a lot of sense.
Representative on the fog committee, that's the whole point of the committee, to do this exactly.
It'd make a lot of sense, but first we need to respond to the, to vegan motion, they, they.
I don't have to. To respond with.
Oh, yeah, well, it would be best. Okay, it would be best to, because that allows them to do their homework on, with the AMF's, we're giving our school district. Which may be relevant, so all this not forcing the discussions, is not saying we recommend something, this is. They're asking for. The ability, they wanna know, is there any draw on any other board for this instance, let's just say yes, we're open minded to all data. As you mentioned, there's a lot of things change over a few calendar years too. We're open to it, just say yes, and then also I'd like your idea, separate motion to, um, engage with them through the fog. But let's give you claims to be answered their request.
Right, so. I'm just trying to think, you see, really, yeah.
I thought you wanted a question that's come for this, it's been for Greg, though. The S, the S A U board has asked us for.
No, 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 sorry, no, no, the, 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 uh. So he can for two, three years, two years ago. Stop discussion on this topic, because there was a few members of their board that kept flying, they got different forums, they found us that. You're not passing this, so we're going to, um, no longer hear this. Topic of Amber School students, so that they who are in the cooperatives. Facility use, until we're approached by the board, meaning I've heard in Amber's. So all I'm saying is, let's respond to that now, given time passing and other factors here. And say, you're allowed to look at your facilities used for optimal use for the S A U, which may include. And our students, and it's, and just looking at it doesn't mean that we're saying find a spot for. This eighth grade class was saying, let's look at it, that's all. So then a yes vote just allows them to do work, it requires of anything, certainly, I like, I like Shannon's idea of making a motion work with them all the time, but. Um, let's just pass as I've made.
Yeah, so I guess, if, for, for me, I don't. Think it's, the responsibility was more to tell us how we know what they can, cannot do.
I agree.
You know, it's not, so if they choose, you know, if we choose to, to look at our, you know, Wilkins building is. Uh, you know, do we want the town to be able to use them here for workspace, right? Like I. I don't, I think the fog, for me, the fog's the appropriate place, and obviously my comments there.
Welcome. Okay. So to be fair, I do, I do believe that what Dr. Prince is asking is that we just send a formal. Request or, or response from us saying. Hey, we are, we are encountering one of our members in the F C S committee to bring up this topic of, of. What's available and do we wanna pursue that in any way, like, I think because. So, yeah.
I think that would be effective, but we have to answer it the way they ordered it to.
But I think that we, that we have, that we have to give one thing to them at their board level, that, that, that says, hey, your representative can speak to our representative about this particular topic now that. Whatever, because they don't wanna talk about the topic, because they have this pre-standing, and we're trying to avoid that.
Yes.
So I think, I think he's simply asking for the formality of us saying, as a board, we have the power and the formality of it. That's all.
I may be mistaken, but I think we voted on it with their body. This exact thing, and they had a desire to do this higher, uh, so I feel like this should be. You know, I, I feel we should move on from this, but I really like the idea of having formerly known as fog. Looking into this, because I think it's appropriate to.
Right.
You know, turn every.
So Mike, can you clarify that, do we need to?
Yes.
It's, it's helpful to you and to, to vegan board, we. We approached them as they requested, saying we are interested in the idea of Amber School students being, being tool in a facility currently used by the, so you can borrow. Well, not.
No, we're not.
Oh, no, I can, I can add some, so what I would say, I would say, this will be in your motion, you know, you can just advise me to put this on the. F C G facilities communication, and I know it was fog, and that was. More catching, right, uh.
We like that.
And, uh, I know, you just have me put this on the agenda, I'll put it on the agenda, uh, Christie Peters. So place that conversation, and, uh, and then we'll pour back up to, you know, each, each, uh, member from that group will pour back up. Well, how that conversation goes, and then if San Egan wants something specific, they can have that meeting on the eleventh, you know, that conversation. Uh, cause we'll have the fog, uh, you know, we'll have a meeting on the, alright, so. We'll get that going, and you just ask me to put it on the agenda, on the agenda, and then I'll, you know, get that. We'll get an update on the S A U meeting, and then somebody can decide what they wanna do with it on the eleventh.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. So I can call a vote on the motion, or we can choose to, you wanna call a vote, alright, so I. Can't restate your motion, bud, would you like to?
Most of us moved.
Motion is moved by Dr. Prince. All in favor of the motion. All opposed. Wait, alright, I would like, I know that Superintendent Barry said we don't need a motion, but I'd like to formalize this, um. I'd like to make a motion that we empower our representative on the F C G committee to discuss, um. All space across the S A U with the other members of the F C G, and the appropriateness of. That space in the.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Prince, any discussion? All, all in favor? Pass as you can, honestly, alright, thank you for that, uh, Dr. Prince, and everyone likes to have a good conversation, Superintendent Barry, um, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we need to spend, I wanna go back to that slide deck with the, the, uh, locals options. And so. What we have moving forward right now, in, in the name of providing information, is we have two options. Option one is renovate and expand grades one through four. Um, and in, in simply, you all have access to, um. A series of documents you have, um. Option one plans, and then option, uh, one area dig. Or our area diagram, and I'll explain what that looks like a little bit later, um, but if you look at my, uh. You know, points of conversation and board notes, the next step is to cost out these conceptuals, try and mention, try and working with three construction management companies to. To cost these out. Um, a couple of things to keep in mind, we've talked about renovate and expand, it can be cost-effective, but. What I'm learning, it's, it's a bit of a slow process, requires more detailed skill, and then built-to-suit is more costly, but can. Move quicker, it's easier, you know, and doesn't require as much technicality. Um, a couple of things that, as we show the slide deck, these are just original sketches, the plans that you have in simply are far better. I just didn't change this from the twelfth, uh, we just didn't get to it. Um, and as we get further along, I'll upgrade, uh, our, our slide deck, as you know, there's a lot happening here, so go to the next slide, my friend. Um. You know, there's the option one is renovate, expand, option two is build to suit. For next slide. And option one, you know, when you talk to Arc, uh, Banwell and Trident, you know, they, I had to create a pros and cons. Now, this is just a pure, you know, pros and cons of, from the architectural, it's not the educational pros and cons. That's something that we will produce, as you guys can, as we get closer to, uh. You know, our work that's happening over the next couple of weeks, but you just look in there, you see the advantages of renovating expand, you see the disadvantages. According to the structural side of it from the architects and tridents, um, and. You'll see, see that there, I'll give you a minute. Then if you go to the next slide. Um, educational implications, we did go ahead and, and, and talk a little bit with Kathleen Murphy about what this would look like. Um, and. You know, you see from her, clear and consistent grouping is, is a highlight there. Um, there was conversation about putting the gym in the back, spreads out large spaces, allows for the easy community use, I know that was part of a conversation that we had in previous years. Um, direct access to the field. You know, so the gym in that location was, it was a, a real driver for us on, on this, as we've made this recommendation. We did create flex rooms that are designed, you know, uh, for growth, and so, you know, you see those included in here. Um. So. You know, you see the cubbies, you know, that we are, you know, we're gonna put in the hallway for storage, that creates. You know, better space in the classroom, so that, that's a quick highlight of option one. Go to. Option, and then you go to option, your next slide there, I asked Kathleen. Like, hey, what's this look like on paper? And she just took the. Thing, and this is very quick and dirty, and we'll have far more conversation, but this is a long meeting, and I just kinda wanna give you guys an update. Um, but you see how they would staff, that's how they would outline it, right? That's how they would use the space. In the, uh, the renovate and expand option, alright, and, uh, so. And you see, there's a little slight adjustment, the part up in front of the M P R, that's the front of the administrative building, so instead of being there, it'd be out front over here. And, uh, so more specific information to come, excited to show you guys some different things, go to option two, this is the built-to-suit option. And, uh, and, um. You know, you can see, it, it's, it's a little bit different, and. You've got the next slide, advantages and disadvantages from a pure structural standpoint. You know, two floors, long suspension spine, um, those are disadvantages, in, in my opinion, and, and with the, uh. According to Banwell and Trident, um. And so. You can see some of the advantages, spaces are, are built to suit, can be phased. Alright, um.
Like, this is a, this is a built-to-suit or renovate?
We just need to skip the slide.
Uh, yeah, it, it, I didn't update the slide, right? It, it's built to suit, I apologize.
So, when we did option two, correct?
Yeah, you're right where you need to be. So, right there, keep going, one more slide over. Alright, option two, educational implications. You know, educational grouping was positive, first the classrooms a little further away from unified arts and the social spaces, like that's a reality, but Kathleen didn't think that was, you know. Deal breaker, um, the hallway cubbies there is important for her, and this, um. You can create a stepping up environment with a second floor, um. And so, you know, flex space will, you know, help us plan for, for growth there, and so then again, I'd ask Kathleen to take a look at how you would staff this. See, next slide, first. There. That's the first floor, it goes to the second floor, it's there, and, you know, it's clear that, you know, they have a useful for this, and, uh. And so, the purpose of tonight is to give you guys kind of an update here, you know, obviously we'll be, we're putting out some more information as we, as we get this. Um. But I wanted you guys to, to see, uh. What the work right now, and if you look in, in simply, um, in the notes. So there's two documents, there's like the plans. Right, you see that, and then there's a called area diagram, but I just want you, for your own use, and when we roll these out, I'll explain this. Red is an addition, if you get to that, you'll see an addition, the blue is a light renovation, and then the green is a heavy renovation. And so, that should help inform thinking there, as well as the plans, uh, that was something that Trident, you know, uh, worked with me on to, to kinda highlight for you guys. And, uh, so. The other thing is you see the aspects. Uh, you know, I know this was a conversation that people wanted, you know, obviously we see the aspects, but the way we do is like. We, we're the educators, we know what we need, you know, for this building, uh, we know how to best service our children and, and, and students. And at the end of the day, we were, had in mind all the conversations over the building and grounds, the years that we've been in, all the conversations around. Board, the conversations around the, the listening session, and the multiple surveys that were done in previous years. And then that's how we came up with, as we told you all, the twelfth, with one and four expand, one and four there, you know, and at the end of the day. You know, when you look at it, you have roughly. Around. You know. Depending on I gotta have it in front of me, but a reduction of. Almost twenty thousand square feet from the previous project. You know, in square footage. And so, for us. You know, between that. And tried in costing it out, and. You know, Banwell asking good questions. I think you'll get, you know, you know, the information that you need on these two areas, and as I mentioned, there's, aren't the, we're not limited to these, but this is what we got going with because of the time. You know, that we were in, and so, continue to work, and, you know, there's another, there's, you know, some meetings coming up. If you go back to this, this, the first slide of the timeline. You know, we have Amber's building and ground, I know there's gonna be another building and grounds meeting prior to the twelfth that was added, that's not on the timeline. If there's building and grounds, Trident will be in attendance, if the sixteenth, Banwell and Trident will be in attendance on the, the event on the sixteenth. And, uh, the Hammer's board meeting on the eighteenth, and so I think, uh. You know, there, there's a number of opportunities to, to continue to do this work, if this board chooses that they need another meeting to come together. Talk about this between now and the eighteenth, we're open to that, you know, to, to schedule that, um, but I wanted to give you an update on where we're at with the work. Not limited to, I knew we had a very full agenda, we'll get it to close to three hours. And, uh, and like I said, this board works pretty hard, so. I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, Superintendent Barry, um, Mr. Perry, could you put it back on the timeline slide we're behind? I think it's like the first slide. Like, you know, closer, yes, there we go. Okay, so I heard a few different, uh, questions there, the first question I heard was, do we as why feel like we need another meeting? Ahead of the December. Eighteenth meeting. So I'll open that up to, to you all, person. And. What are we expecting between, like, I don't know what there is sometimes, I don't know, you know, I don't wanna hold another meeting if we don't have anything beyond what we have right now, right? So for me, I'm interested, obviously, we're all.
I'm glad you asked that question, I think your, your options are, you're gonna have the meeting on the fifteenth of December. I hate to narrow your window. But I think the, the costing will be due in front of the construction man, uh, management firms on the twelfth. Which is a Friday, I believe. Oh, to that.
It is.
Yeah, and then. I think on Monday the fifteenth is an opportunity for you to get that information. As it comes in. And, and because on the sixteenth, we wanted to present that to the community. As far as like, you know, costing that, and, 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 and designs, and let people weigh in, and like. And I think that's part of the conversation, it's part of the journey, but I think the fifteenth is the night, that if you're gonna meet, even if it's after school. To have a conversation. Yeah, you might have been doing it before, like.
So it do.
You can, you can play around with it, you know what I mean, like, I guess, but I think that people. They're doing this timeline, but, but, I'm just trying to help you out.
No, I appreciate it, so I guess if there's a, a, um, desires in the body, we can ask, uh, Superintendent Barry's office to facilitate a time. That can work for us to, to have that meeting, there are several things on the community calendars that I have, probably your personal calendars as well, um, so, so I guess. Joe Manz, are we interested in scheduling something for that night and then? Or that afternoon or the day, or, 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 okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear, I see now, so yeah, sorry, we need that.
About, one thing about the timing on that, like, I think doing it after five means that. The teams only have the sixteenth day to get ready for the fifteenth night invitation, I feel like. You can end on me before one P M that they have. You know, half a day plus a night to also do their work, so I'd like to have either morning or the meeting.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll throw up something, Joseph will get, will work with us on that. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll throw up something, Joseph will get, will work with us on that and I appreciate that.
You know, I know that we can make a priority of, of being available to you that day during the day.
I will work on that, uh, very good tomorrow, Monday, right? Expect some communication from our, our office.
Okay, so there are a few questions, but are there any other questions that we need to answer? All right, so before we move into committee updates, is there any, any other thoughts from the, from the bodies, the Superintendent Barry, as we continue. Moving towards these December dates.
I just want to give an update that everything that we just shared, I'll be sending, um, directly to building and grounds, and we have an additional meeting on December third. And so we will be, uh, I can bring back any discussion of that, and we have our, uh, pre-existing. One that was scheduled on the twelfth, where we will be meeting Trident the first time, that was as a committee. Is it nine on the twelfth? So if you wanted to come along with that as well, you can, he can be. You would, you would be, you could be there as a unit even, sir. So yeah, we do, we do have those scheduled and, and we did, we have already started discussing. With some of the subcommittee budget meetings, we started discussing some of. The CNA run for here, so that will be part of that work that we do on the third, that will help perform across some things as well, so, uh. We'll have a way to write it next, but then hopefully by the twelfth, we'll have more complete information as well. To give some of our thoughts to bring that meeting on the Monday. The. So just to let you know what we have.
Thank you. Um, and, and do you want to, so the sixteenth then we're locked in, that day is the meeting presentation.
That's public hearing, twelve.
No.
That's just the.
Yeah, I know we have a lot going on and then, you know, a lot of more work to be done around the, the type of event that we're having. You know, obviously we want to plan for people to be able to interact and participate if they can't make it to that event. That's in our thinking as well, because it is incredibly busy time of year and, uh. Um, so, uh, we'll, we'll work on that when we come. And, uh, and so. We'll find a quarterly.
Okay, thank you, you read, you, you were picking up what I was putting down. For Superintendent Shimmer would say, uh, for that, that is, is how we prepare for, for folks who may not be present. On sixteen, you know, to, to hear from them. So the idea is the sixteenth is, you know, before our next board meeting, where we have some big discussions to have and big decisions to make. Hoping yet marching into the January public hearing. So we can hear from the community. On sixteen. And then we have our meeting as a body on the eighteenth. We meet on, so we're gonna be on the fifteenth as a body, hopefully sometime during the day, right? We'll see what time that shakes out. Then on the sixteenth is the community presentation. And then we meet as a body on the eighth. I just, I'm just summarizing what I'm looking at, making sure we're all kind of. On the same page, uh, and obviously there's a, a lot of communication that needs to be done to get people. To. All right, so. Are we good on this for now? And then we'll move into committee updates. All right, so I'm starting with this meeting because I think you already started with building and grounds, if you'd like to. Uh, carry that on and, and everyone.
Um, sure, um, I think that we have a very passionate group, um, we will be taking up also. Formals as one of the charges that you wanted, uh, uh, for information and a stronger plan on, so that's another item that we'll be discussing and bringing back. Since there may be budget implications that could go into graph three possibly. So we will also be discussing this. And. One of the areas in general that we have asked for is, uh, some of our members. Have recommended some different types of materials that may help with cost down, and so that's one thing that we have charged, uh, Trident with keeping in mind as they're looking at this. That they're looking at alternate, um. Prefabrication or wood or materials that, that may allow us to have the same results, but at a lower cost. Knowing that that's one of the, the driving factors of, of this overall for our meeting. So that is, uh, some work that we have already brought, um, to bring to their deliberations. And you'll notice that these plans look very similar to some of our previous plans, that they were able to leverage previous organized work, once again. Thank previous willing grass companies as well as the current one for all of the excessive ones that are happening over these many years that allow us to go quickly. Because they've been able to build on the work that this began.
Uh, other committee. Other committee updates. I feel like I always talked about all these, so there's no update needed there. So I attended the S E U budget committee meeting this week, it went very well, it was very well received, you'll hear more at our S A U meeting in December. Uh, but that's a, another great group of, of volunteers, community minded from all of Manhattan and others, uh. And then representatives from those, uh, S A F C committees, so, uh, I attended that this weekend and, but, uh. Um, any other committees, anyone?
Do you have nothing to report on? The contract negotiations, but I figured at least mention that. As. We discussed it over the week, a week ago, week and a half ago, so nothing really has changed. We were supposed to meet with A S S A recently, um. A team came up, so we're working on some schedule of that, so that'll probably, um, sometime early December because of the holiday. Uh, P T A met last night. A little up to here. Uh, membership, excuse me, approved, uh, boosters on fundraising to continue, uh, for Clark Wobkes. Uh, due to the overwhelming success, uh, this year, they raised plus or some two thousand dollars. Uh, they are exploring new ideas for fundraising for A M S. Um, just to try to see if they can draw, uh, more, uh, income than they have. Uh, for upcoming events, holiday storytime, teachers and staff, which is usually a big hit, is December or seventeenth. Uh, we do want to schedule for the L N D R, but that's moving over to middle school, uh. Third grade circus. January ninth, that's at the middle school. Uh, code events, and I saw one out here, they recently put one over at the middle school, they've actually been filling up quite quickly. And so those proceeds will fit to together. Um, again, P T A's, uh, continues to support the schools, uh, and the students and teachers, I, I commend them. Um, I also want to mention that at the last meeting. Uh, it was brought up that someone, uh, from the community is actually, uh, written a letter to. National P T A and state P T A, seeing, um, our local P T A of some things. Uh, which is, uh. I guess alarming, disappointing, uh, to kind of come after a organization like that, so. Um, I guess I just want to say that. We're, we're in an uphill battle. If people are coming after the P T A as well, I know this administration has caught a lot of flak over the last few years. Um, there's been a lot of right to noses coming after board members, so, uh, I just want to thank you guys here. For what you're doing, obviously, me as a member, uh, jumping into this full four, but you guys have done here doing this, and I thank you guys, and, uh, thanks.
Does any of that expose the board or the administration to anything that's been used here?
All right. Move in, I, anything else on committees?
I mean, we're simply supposed to themselves.
Yep, okay. Great, well, thank you all, I know, you know, we have a lot going on, a lot of committees, so again, thanks to everyone over there. Fine. Uh, next, we'll move on to personnel, so we have two different items and personnel to deal with, this is one we'd like to smooth you for.
So let's, let's do the long-term substitute, here's one, and then if you're busy simply, if you could make sure you look at the highlighted. Bolden.
Yes.
Well, I, I wasn't going to put it in a cap, but with the highlighted bold, you know, the second part of personnel. Um, but I can't really let boss speak to this, because boss has been driving this, making his Emmer's board debut.
So we have a Logan's teacher who's out on F M O A, and we're going to need a long-term sub. Ernie, it's all manning, it's best such a building, and it's all work, it's really happy with her. So she would like to move Nicole into the long-term subdivision, Nicole doesn't have an elementary certification. So in the old days, the D O E would. A certificate of eligibility with that power now rest with boards. So we asked. Um, on our behalf, on Principal Murphy's behalf, is to grant, uh, Nicole Manning that. Certificate of eligibility for one year, that she can become a long-term sub. The F M O A position.
She's also moving to long-term sub.
Yeah, she will. And Logan's potentially, there will be a second, um, pregnancy meeting, F M I in the spring, and I'll just pick over that too.
As you mentioned, as we mentioned, uh. I think we have five or six certainties this year. So finding. Effective long-term subs. This is a good challenge, so, uh, very lucky that the fold is interested in it. So, and, uh, and so we would like a ball.
I have a question real quick on the, uh. One year, is it, is it a calendar year, is it a year from when we have proven availability supports and local management of the ball? You know, with this. I'm just curious, is it, is it a school year that we're pretty big?
My radio is a calendar.
Any questions for Mr. Duzo this time? This request. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, moved by Mr. Gold, uh, the motion as presented is to offer a one-time certificate of eligibility for a one-year period to, and all. Is there a second? Okay, so moved by this, uh, second by this beam, uh, any further discussion?
Uh-oh, thrilled to have somebody. Yeah.
All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, next, uh, we have some retirements, so we have three, and they are all for requests for June of twenty twenty seven. Um, I would like to, I will actually move to accept those slate of, uh, retirements as presented with appreciation. And regret. Seconded by this beam. Any discussion?
And I also echo your regret.
And echo for the regrets, um, all in favor? My motion passes unanimously, so thank you all. Uh, future listeners.
We talked about in one of our. Meetings in this room, talked about putting onto this agenda the future listening session, but I gather from the. Draft of that. Uh, December eighteen meeting or whatever is that activities that I'm doing. Do you want to have that discussion in another meeting? Okay, not having it all, but I just remember we, we did punt it out today, it was on the agenda, so.
For a future listening.
For a regular succession provoked to projects, you want? I did that, I love it.
If we're all good with that, I appreciate you.
Just checking boxes.
All right. All right, with that, move into public comments, two of two, we'll open the floor first to those folks in the room. Please state your name, town or residence, and three minutes.
Thank you, uh, Michael Amiga speaking as a resident of Amherst. And on set as a committee member, running committees I've served. I, uh, am a little frustrated because it seems that the board hasn't actually read the after action memorandum. Uh, Superintendent Mike Barry stated that C N A was not done. And board members here have said, no, a C N A was done, we have a C N A. Uh, we've also been told, uh, we've been told for years, a maintenance was being done. Um, in fact, is that it wasn't. Uh, a cogging control you want should not have taken eight years to fix. Um, so there, the, the, we should definitely look into that as well. I know this is also not a Q and A, um, so I don't expect answers, but I think there are some questions the community deserves to know the answers to. And so I'll try to go through this quickly. You mentioned that multiple witnesses attest, the reason for the tape, if multiple staff members were aware of the tape and as per this. Get, which you stated was catching incest. Why was this specific activity not considered a red flag regarding the structural integrity of the yard? Uh, also, did you provide D W Construction with the twenty seventeen onsite inside report during the pre-bond service phase? If not, why was the document beginning vertical structural warnings withheld from the construction management firm? The. Uh, since no return report references the tape, did any, uh, district employees follow up with J P? As services to ask why the tape they ordered was not addressed in their findings? Who was responsible for closing the loop on that specific maintenance task? And lastly, the report cites Mr. Preston's lack of onboarding during the pandemic as a reason for gaps in facility oversight. Mr. Preston has presumably held his position for several years post-pandemic. Why was this gap in facility oversight not identified or corrected during standard performance reviews? Or annual budget cycles over the last three, four years? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amiga. Anyone else in the room wishing to address the board? Okay, we'll move to our friends online. Is there anyone attending virtually who would like to address the board?
Yes.
Great, you will be moved over to the panelist's position, please turn on your camera, state your name and town and residence, and you will have three minutes.
All right, hello, can you hear me?
You are all set.
Okay, yeah, there was a little pause there. So again, my device does not have a webcam, so is it fine that I just speak with, uh, so you just hear my voice?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, so I do have. Hold on one moment, please. It's a problem with commenting remotely. It's a little more difficult. Uh, so I do have a few questions pertaining to this night's agenda. Uh, and previously it was, uh, stated that, uh, agenda items can be answered. Uh, and hope that my answers are not, I hope that any answers are not counted towards my time. Uh, a question that is before this board, uh, tonight was deferred to this meeting for full board review. Uh, and Chair Gus Goin, you are best equipped to answer as you served as Chair of J F A C, but any member can weigh in if they choose to. Uh, did this year's R F P process for a contractor as a whole follow established Amherst district? Procedures, did it follow past practices or deviate from them?
Mr. Kathleen, this is not a Q and A, and we did address this during that portion of the meeting. If you missed it, it will be up usually by the next afternoon.
That, that quest, specific question was answered?
Yeah, the seeking question was asked and answered.
Okay, and just to clarify, uh, you have answered questions early in the year to certain individuals. And you clearly stated, um, at a meeting, I don't know, three or four meetings ago, that any agenda items can be answered. It's only new item.
How hard was that? It's likely that any agenda items will be, that any questions will be answered, but that they may be answered later in the meeting. Should they be on the agenda? Because the body's taking up that item as an agenda item. Not that there's a back and forth.
All right, so if I ask a question to administration right now, there will be no answer?
No, sir.
Okay, I, I, I have only, um. One comment then. Uh, just as a structural engineer, uh, that addressed, uh, that looked into the M P R issue. Had the crucial role to provide oversight over the shoring company's work. It is this board's crucial role and responsibility to provide oversight over the administration. Furthermore, when rights and no laws that are designed to guarantee transparency are violated repeatedly violated. Over and over and over again. I ask you to self-reflect and determine just how transparent this district has been. I will go back and review this meeting to see if the questions were in fact answered, if they were not. Um, emails. Are refused to be answered. In what manner can they be answered then, if some were missed? That was, there, there's a, a simple question, if they can't be answered now and they aren't answered through emails, through which avenue does someone have to go? To get an answer to specific questions?
I mean, I mean.
Okay, I guess that's the answer, it speaks for itself, thank you, have a good evening. Unless you, unless you choose to answer that question, is there a avenue to go down?
The, the avenue is email. And the question that you asked has been answered, it was asked by Dr. Fritz earlier in our meeting, and that question was answered.
Okay, I'll take a look at that one, uh, and I won't ask the administration one now, because that will be, uh, that will. Okay, I'll take a look at that one, uh, and I won't ask the administration one now, because that will be, uh, that will not be answered. So thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Is there anyone else online who should to address?
Uh, the.
Same don't want, uh, we do have a need for a non-public this evening. Under RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two. Uh, would someone like to make the motion to enter into that? Moved by Miss B, is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Dr. Fritz, all in favor, or is there a discussion?
No, just trying to get ready.
Alright, all in makeup. You may notice, we will be entering into non-public session at eight forty-one P M.